Good morning, welcome to the meeting. A Tuesday. November 5th. Can we have roll call please?
Yes Chair Supervisor Madrone.
Here.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Here.
Supervisor Bone. Chair Bushnell.
Good morning again.
All are here.
Okay, can we salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
CAO Hayes, are there modifications? Good morning Chair Bushnell, there's no modifications today. Okay. We'll go right into the consent calendar. Is there any item a supervisor wishes to speak on? Okay CNN, we'll go to Veterans Day proclamation coming from, to us from Supervisor Arroyo.
Great. Hi Rena, good to see you. All right, I will go ahead and read this out and then bring it down to you and we can do a photo. Whereas the people of Humboldt County in the state of California appreciate and admire the thousands of individuals who serve and have served in the armed forces to protect and preserve their country and the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. And whereas in war, international conflicts and peacekeeping missions, service members have been wounded, taken prisoner, and died in the line of duty. And whereas due to their military experience, veterans possess a wide variety of valuable qualities including experience, maturity, leadership, and loyalty. And whereas the county of Humboldt is committed to ensuring that veterans receive the respect and honor they have learned, or earned. Whereas as part of Operation Green Light for Veterans, Humboldt County is illuminating the Eureka Veterans Hall green and other veterans halls as well as the county courthouse beginning on November 4th. And we encourage individuals and businesses to join us by changing one light bulb in the entryway of your house or business to a green bulb. And whereas Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services Veteran Service Office has provided veteran services to more than 8,500 veterans, including connecting our veterans and their families to federal and state benefits, helping them manage employment needs and doctor's appointments, as well as helping them find veteran peers who can assist with their transition back to civilian life. Now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors proclaims that the county of Humboldt honors all veterans for their extraordinary service to their country and thanks them for protecting the freedoms we all enjoy.
Thanks for the great editorial. Thanks for the great editorial.
One, two, three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Well, on behalf of Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services Veteran Service Office, I greatly want to appreciate all of you and to the community for their continued supports of our veterans. We love the work that we do and it is a never-ending job to try to help support our veterans. Thank you for this opportunity, hope to see you out at the different veterans events that'll be happening the next week or so. And when possible, please keep in mind the community is coming together from various food banks to support the Coast Guard and other programs that are being impacted currently. So if we can just try to think ahead and maybe share, share our good open hands, say thank you for your service and be there for our community would be appreciated for everyone. Thank you, does anybody want to add? Supervisor Bone.
Happy birthday to the Marines this weekend or this month.
Thanks for everything that you do and help with and provide for, I hear lots of good things with you, you and your group, just really helping the veterans and sometimes they just need just someone to talk to and just to help them through that process and I hear that often, so thank you.
I will say now is an interesting time to be a service member and for our veterans to kind of navigate as there are changing policies around service and you know, I personally know folks who have had to leave the service recently because their identity didn't align with the priorities right now. So I know that those are a unique set of folks who are struggling and who are coming to grips with their service and being proud of it and also what it means to transition to the next phase of their lives. So I wanted to note that in addition to the wonderful resources the Veteran Service Office provides, Nation's Finest, which is an organization here in Eureka, provides support and counseling to folks regardless of discharge status. And I thought that was really cool because I do know, you know, over the years, for a variety of reasons, people's, you know, ability to serve has changed. And so we have people who have been discharged other than honorably or other than a general discharge who I know that we serve and that other organizations in the community also serve and that's important too because some people have struggled in their service. But many have served honorably and I know we, you know, they're the folks who I think have a lot of support in the community too. But I just want to, I guess, voice my support for all of the veterans.
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, sorry, just quick and simple, not just, but to add on to the thanks in regard to the service of our veterans when they were, you know, enlisted and actually in it, but really I want to also add on to that the thanks for the extended service to our communities. I just want to say there's so many times I interface with and we all interface with veterans in our community that are doing continuing service, especially in times when we're, when we're really struggling. They're struggling, we're struggling and yet they continue to serve and I just really appreciate that, thank you.
Supervisor Madrone.
Thank you Chair, yeah, thank you for your service to the vets and thank you to all the vets and in honor of my father, Semper Fi.
Kaylee, are we able to, are we okay? Do we need to take a break?
After the motion, please.
Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate you being here. Any other comments on the consent calendar from the board? Seeing none, I'll go to public comment and we'll start on the Zoom.
Thank you Chair, caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Ken Swatki from Mexico. Thank you, maybe before, but anyway, maybe I'm off today. I did want to let you know that regarding what I'm able to visualize down there, there is no streaming video support and the agenda doesn't appear as it normally does. I did want to mention regarding the veterans, a friend of mine, she's in the Delaware area, Fern, and she sent me some pictures of the veterans building down there and it appears to be, caused to be weatherized, if not weatherized by now. I appreciate for the veterans that we finally do have something moving forward with them on that project and if they're not having the room with some vacant building in the middle of Garfield, we get to have their site then. So thank you so much and this is what I remember veterans, my brother, you know, he was a veteran in World War II and got a Purple Heart and a piece shirt and so anyway, I didn't, but my thoughts are always with the veterans who have given so much for us and the things they do. Again, thank you for moving forward on the veterans' fall down there and that's my comment today on the consent calendar.
Thank you, that's all on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, so this is public comment on the consent calendar only. Ma'am, if you have a comment on the consent calendar, you may start.
Yeah, I would just like to comment on the consent calendar that I would like the public comment to be moved up to the front of today's meeting because I would like to try to vote. And my name is Alexandra Provant, thank you.
Thank you, is there any other public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back for a motion.
I will move consent.
A second.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Bone.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, and I apologize but we need to take a five-minute break. Currently, if you are accessing the meeting through the recorded process or live streaming, you will not be able to look at your agenda. However, the agenda is posted on Humboldt Legistar and you can toggle back and forth and I'll make sure that I announce the items as we're going forward. And so we have passed the consent calendar and nothing was pulled and so the next item in row is comments on non-agenda items and we will start on Zoom.
Thank you Chair, caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
One topic which I think will come before you, maybe not this meeting, but in the next meeting, is how some people in Humboldt County are being treated improperly. They feel like leaving and Aaron, Erin, McLaren, one of those people, very disbelieving with what's happening in this world, somebody who can cause their all kinds of grief trips, acting in a manner that is temporarily restraining, I was very concerned, totally unjustified. I don't know where our court system goes, but there's a problem with that. I did do a little bit of research yesterday, I don't know if you did hire somebody for your aviation director, but that airport needs a makeover, it is our segue, our entryway to Humboldt County and it has major problems with it, it does not look well, they might have just signed in for $174 economy for no sick road on United and raining inside of D F, that needs a major upgrade, hopefully somebody can do that. Did want to point out that some of the rates I found there, this was off December 3rd, it's a really good time for rates, 174.68 to fly in S F, but it was at 4:30 in the afternoon, if you wanted to fly at 8:15 in the morning, 394.21, twice as much we have a problem with our airport, our United Services in the area, 204.43 at 4:13 in the afternoon, 8:15 in the morning, the 5:34.91. We need somebody who's able to get reasonable rates, a reasonable schedule and it's pretty difficult, I'm going to start finding out the network it looks like and I'm guessing everybody will, I'm trying to set up a channel service for people to get up there and we will just avoid ACV until this time if we can get barriers to check with people. So those are a couple of topics I want you to deal with. We have more things on the agenda, I'll deal with those later. Appreciate you acknowledging and having people so they can find the agenda somewhere else, it's hard to crack without the agenda and I should have printed it out, but I didn't. It's much too many people on the non-agenda items today.
Thank you, caller 3053, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here, I just want to confirm you can hear me because the previous speaker was kind of broken up, so I don't know if it's my service.
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak, I brought up Misere's last week, if I bring it up again, I don't see it on the agenda. I just want to make sure I'm not missed heard though, I did hear the board in saying they aren't changing the deadline and when they pass that December 31st, what I'm asking for is how they process that deadline. I remember there was about eight different groups that some had made one payment and then some as many as like probably 50 to 75 percent, maybe a tiered approach, how they go about suspensions and then potential revocation, maybe the first group, you know, suspension immediately, revocation in 14 days from then, and then just kind of follow down a two-week pattern through the different eight subgroups. Obviously, I know it's unpopular to say this, but it is unfair to those that have paid already, that December 31st deadline would get a 10 percent, you know, everyone gets charged 10 percent interest on top of their remaining balance. And I do acknowledge that this needs to be figured out before April so that way there aren't more cultivation with potentially suspended or revocation licenses out there, that way everyone's clear before the real planting season happens. But I really hope you put something on your board or on your agenda so that way the board can talk about how they're going to implement the process. And still I've heard from you Mike, $50,000 in Misere's or tax credit, sign over that note, $313,000. Like I said, laws aren't upheld in this county very well and there's many reasons why people are behind on different things, distributors don't pay, businesses don't pay, and it's unfortunate trickle-down effect and judges and DAs and probation in this county do not uphold things, so thank you for the opportunity to speak.
That's all on Zoom Chair.
Thank you, non-agenda items in the room, you may start ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Alexandra Provant, I am registered to vote in this county as of last December I believe. I've been sick, so I just got back, I hope you guys are all doing well, thank you for all your service to the county. I did submit two copies of two-page affidavits, they're draft affidavits, they have not been notarized yet, I submitted them in good faith in an attempt to mitigate damage being caused by the title theft and fraud related to properties in Edersburg, California and Ferndale, California. I was brought up to believe in the state of Nevada that governance begins with self-governance and that the reason we're to self-govern our actions is to avoid causing harm and injuries to others by being accountable for our own actions and checking our own behavior. The private matters related to the real estate at 367 Shaw Avenue in Ferndale, California and at 8750 Wilder Ridge Road in Edersburg, California are not private matters, they are public matters and the reason they're public matters is because they involve public health and safety codes in the state of California and United States Treasury Securities and Exchanges and Banking Codes that have penal provision violations going on. I was unaware until going through my legal paper a couple nights ago, how the county was directly involved and unfortunately I found a link that causes all of you and any investments that the county has made based on Moody's rated investments in the Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, also known as Freddie Mac, that violations against that penal provision have existed. And in the 2016 county budget and the Galena audit of that budget, there was discovery made on page 42, I believe line item three in the Moody's listed investments, that the county of Humboldt does have investment in the Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation. I have evidence in my possession as I stand here that shows that in county records, there are documents recorded using the words Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation. Using those words together is actually a violation of the federal penal code, which was the 1974 Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation Act penal provision. So that is why people use the word Freddie Mac. I will submit the evidentiary support I have in my possession to Tracy and before I leave, also I have an assessment appeal before the county and upon trying to submit assessment appeals, Tracy is not able to accept paper that's meant to be a part of evidentiary support for those appeals, so I would prefer that you guys actually allow them to start accepting that paper. Thank you very much, thank you for all that you do for the county.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on non-agenda items and we'll go to H, which is public hearings, and this is coming to us from Planning and Building Department. And I'm going to open the public hearing.
Morning Chair Bushnell, members of the Board of Supervisors John Ford and Augustus Gershaw. To present a modification to the zoning ordinance addressing our density bonus provisions, this was largely done to make our ordinance consistent with state law and it is also a action item required as part of our housing element, so this is a general plan implementation measure. With that, I'm going to give it to Mr. Gershaw to present this.
All right, so yes, as John Ford said, this is about our density bonus update, which also relates to incentives which are heavily tied into density bonuses. Again, as he mentioned, this is related to implementation measure number 37 from our housing element, which promised to amend sections 313-111 and 314-112, density bonuses such that they are consistent with state government code section 65915. Density bonuses are essentially percentage increases in the number of units over the maximum density that could otherwise be allowed on the condition that a percentage of the units are reserved to underserved demographics. Incentives or concessions are regulatory concessions such as the alteration of development standards or zoning code requirements for the purpose of reducing development costs. A couple key changes out of the several key ones that I'd like to highlight are it adds new eligible unit types to the potential qualifiers and the decision needs to be ministerial acts rather than the, rather than us sending them to planning commission every time. Planning staff recommends adopting the resolution, which makes all the findings and adopts the density bonus ordinance update amendment.
Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Madrone.
Well, for those members of the public that might be watching, this stuff gets pretty confusing, I will say I still am trying to grapple with, you know, understanding it all, but is there a short form on where the density bonuses are allowed in terms of zoning types? And it's ministerial, I get that, but I think that would be important, like, you know, not all zones get these bonuses if I understand it correctly.
Anytime you're building more than five houses, five or more houses, you can qualify for a density bonus. So the permitted zonings are anywhere where you could permit housing.
So R3 are better probably.
Not necessarily, because if you're doing a development plan for, in R1 and building several houses on several different lots at once, that could still qualify.
But individual residential lots wouldn't qualify when they're just adding one more?
Not just when they're buying, building one at a time, yes.
Okay, okay, so the idea is for multifamily and/or multiple homes being built concept?
Typically, yes.
Okay, thank you, that was nice and short.
Supervisor Bone.
And the bonus units have to be low-income or workforce housing and everything else, who monitors that?
That would be.
After the first tenant?
That would be our housing division at the planning department. Every instance of a density bonus will be tied with a housing agreement, which we will monitor and track and make sure that everybody's doing what they signed on to for.
Supervisor Wilson.
I'm ready to make a motion when that time comes.
Public comment on the Zoom? Thank you Chair, caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Ken Swatki, the state, it's a call from a lack of wisdom, has decided that the people who live within an area are to be blocked from having comments on major changes to their lifestyle, major changes to their quality of living, major potential debt commits to the value of their property, and in other words, things that would normally have major consequence to the hearing and whatnot are not to be ministerial. This is a, definition of taking this mixed property, all the work lists are very close, it doesn't go that far. It does take away the rights of the individual property owners, it has a major effect on the entitlements that people have and I would encourage, although we have to go along with the state apparently, I would hope that somehow or another we could be doing this in protest, just protect people's property rights and I stand behind that, I stand behind a, I stand behind a Florida house and I stand behind a lot of the gold, but to throw away the participation by the public in their own neighborhoods, their own world, I think it's inconscionable to me. So this is my opportunity to speak on this particular topic.
That's all on Zoom Chair.
Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and come back for a motion. Supervisor Madrone.
Thank you Chair, I was just thinking about like with AOB, right? That's, yeah, that's ministerial as well, but who monitors, I mean, that requires the owner to actually live in the home, that kind of stuff, there's certain various requirements, but is the monitoring of that the same as what's being proposed here? It's different?
No, that'd be entirely different. As Mr. Gershaw mentioned, this would be an affordable housing agreement, that is a formal agreement that goes with the land, it's recorded and so that anybody that's interested in buying the property, there is then an equity share in that that gets maintained over time so the unit or the property essentially remains affordable to that income group during the period of the affordability that's required.
Okay, okay, that sounds much more enforceable and accessible and everybody knows what they're getting into. As you probably know, we're getting, I'm getting a lot of calls from people in my district that have an AOB and they want to turn it into a short-term rental, which doesn't work because that's not the owner living in the house. And you have provided a pathway for them whereby they would come in for a standard building permit and upgrade whatever they need to to be able to satisfy the building code under a normal permit, which could be substantial and maybe not even possible depending on the building materials and other kinds of things, but there's a pathway, but I know people are not happy about that, but first of all, they signed up for AOB to have the reduction in building permit fees and everything else and then now they want to change it up, so, but you've probably heard that, that we're getting some calls, I suspect other supervisors are as well, but anyway, off topic, my apologies.
Supervisor Director Ford.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify one thing, is that this ordinance in and of itself doesn't remove anybody's right to participate. All this does is ties participation into what the underlying permit for the residential development would be. If it's ministerial, then it'd be ministerial. If it requires a special permit, conditional use permit requiring public notice, then that public notice would be given.
Supervisor Wilson.
Essentially, this is a streamlining ordinance as per direction from the state and doesn't encumber anyone's property anymore, matter of fact, it expands entitlements, so building entitlements. Okay, well with that, I move that we adopt the resolutions which are attached in here. I find that the amendments to zoning regulations are exempt from Ziqua, Zequa, excuse me, Ziqua, except for Ziqua, and that the coastal version is also exempt from Ziqua pursuant to section 51265. And find that the amendments to the density bonus ordinance comply with the general plan, the local coastal program and the coastal act, find that the amendments, the density bonus ordinance are in the public interest, and find that the amendments to the density bonus are consistent with the purpose of the ordinance, and that we adopt the ordinance amending Title III, Division I, Chapter IV of our code, sections 314-112, 314-136 through And we adopt the ordinance amending Title III, Division I, Chapter III of the Humboldt Code, sections 31311, 136, and 157 as attached as part of the coastal element. And direct the clerk of the board to publish the post-adoption summary to the inland amendments and the density bonus ordinance within 15 days of adoption of the board, and that's my motion.
I'll second. Closing the public hearing and Kaylee?
Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Arroyo.
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone.
Yes.
Chair Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, we're going to go to item I, which is departmental.
We're going to go to item I, which is departmental reports, and this is coming to us from clerk of the board. Report on the Humboldt County Human Rights Commission.
Good morning, Board. So the item before you is a report on the Human Rights Commission. In January this year, the board directed the clerk of the board's office to do a deep dive into three boards and commissions, looking for changes possibly, bringing them to compliance. We reviewed aviation advisory, we reviewed fishing game, and we are now looking at the Human Rights Commission. So the human rights, just to give you a little background, the Human Rights Commission was established in 1965 and had several changes in the 60s. And the last change was in February 2003, where the purpose of the commission changed to reflect a more appropriate time, 2000 versus the 60s. Just some basic verbiage changing. To review this process, I met with the Human Rights Commission. I spoke to each of you about what your ideas were, what changes you might like to see, and attended several meetings with the Human Rights Commission. One of the issues that you have asked me to look at was the membership. There's currently three members per board member with a commission of 15 people. In the ordinances that were established, their quorum was set at a low level of five attendees. So even though their commission is not full, they've been able to reach quorum. They prefer not to change the membership because they have several subcommittees. And when the commission is full, they have more people to disperse into these individual topics. We also looked at some of the other membership ideas, and we talked about helping them get their membership into compliance by doing a broader outreach with our office and the PAO at the, or the Public Information Officer from the CAO's office. We've managed to change the process a little bit so that even though they're individual appointments, we are using the posting of the vacancies on the consent calendar to help advertise for those positions. It's shown some help to this. We currently have three vacancies now, but we did have six last month. Supervisor Madron has filled his, and I think some of that outreach has helped that. Other challenges that the Human Rights Commission has had, they were having some issues with their technology. They were using Zoom audio and visual to increase their viewing audience and input from the public. And there was some Zoom bombing issues that were happening. So our staff, the clerk of the board staff, has worked with them and giving them some tutorial on how to help remove that possibility. They have always maintained some sort of audiovisual public access because as part of the Human Rights Commission, they feel that that is important to their charge. Some other issues they've had is meeting location. They've asked for other ideas of where this commission has, could meet. They prefer to meet after hours. And so currently, they meet here at the courthouse in Conference Room A in conjunction with the planning commission so that they can avoid having to pay for security costs. Planning commission has a budget. Human rights doesn't necessarily have a budget. If planning commission cancels, then they are forced to cancel their mission, their meeting, or pay for it out of their minimal donations and funding. We've offered them some suggestions, but it's difficult to find meeting spaces. So that's one issue that we've had with them and have been working with them. Another issue is they were wanting to, one of the issues they were having is with interpretation. They have some other language barriers that have happened. They have a helpline that is available 24 hours a day that gets recording, and then they take this information and share it with the commission. And so we've talked with HR about our interpretation policy. And then actually, with the publication of this item, I would like to say thank you to Mary Ann Hansen, who's reached out with her list of interpreters. There is a charge for that. So that's an ongoing issue that we sometimes discuss with them. We've worked with them on agendas, setting up their complacency, and that's all been great. I want to say that I've had a wonderful relationship with the Human Rights Commission, maybe because they do meet here in the courthouse. We have a lot of interaction with them. It's always been really positive. They bring items to the board. They bring current topics. They bring hot topics. They're very consistent with bringing their annual report, which I love and appreciate. Their bylaws are intact. All of that is going really well. They do have an account balance, and currently their balance is at like $2,900. They have hosted some events, which has generated some revenue. They do some trainings. They've worked with Area Foundation. They've worked with, I think, the League of Women Voters. And they've also, they do get donations. So that is what maintains their fund balance. However, if they're charged for interpretation of security, that comes directly from that balance. In conclusion, I would just like to say that their leadership has been amazing. They have a longstanding membership. It's very 50/50 where they have a lot of, they have 50% new members where the turnover shows up, but they have 50% consistent members who've been there a long time and have really established and grounded that commission, and that's amazing. So it's really the board's discretion. I know the number of members was an issue. You may want to change that. You may not. You can direct us in any manner you wish to pursue that. If there's other concerns that you would like to discuss, I'm open to that. They are an ordinance commission, so any changes will have to be codified through that process, such as we did with the fishing game advisory. With that, that is my staff report, and I'm here for any questions.
Supervisor Royo?
Well, it's great to hear that they, what their feelings are about the size of the commission. It's good to know. Was the option of having more at-large commissioners floated to them rather than more? I know we have both district-specific and at-large, we don't have at-large for this one.
That's all been changed through the ordinance process throughout the years. It initially started out with district and at-large, and that was, it tended to be weeded out, so now it's just three appointees from each district.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, and I know I'm one of the ones that has had some turnover and, you know, have appreciated the contributions of each of the appointees and, you know, I have a couple appointments to make. So I would be interested in seeing if we could balance that out with some at-large participants, just if we, so that we have a little bit more flexibility.
Thank you. I just want to add a comment. I also struggle with keeping three people on there just from my district because it's so far to travel. I would love to see the option that it be open to anywhere in Humboldt that we, is it already, Tracy?
Yeah.
It's not within district?
No, the appointments, it's, they can be from anywhere as long as they're in Humboldt County. And I know that when we were under COVID, they had a higher attendance and a better turnout. However, with the laws changing, commissions have to fall under the same rules that you all fall under, so they have to be in person.
Yeah. So my commissioners have came and went because of the travel and the later, the later meetings. And every time I try to get someone, that is a comment they make, you know, I don't have that time in the evening, so forth and so on. So, yeah, I think it's a struggle for me. Just try, and I have gotten some commissioners that aren't from the southern, you know, from my district, which is better, I think, because they're closer. But that's a struggle that I hear a lot. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, that's just what I was going to say, is that they don't have to be from your district, so. Which leads to that, I mean, there's just not enough applicants in general. Because even when we would have, you know, in the past, when some of us have had three filled and someone else is applying from that district, you've notified other supervisors, like, hey, there's this person who's applying. So, I mean, I'm just saying, anyone who applies, we all, we all get those.
Correct. So we, because we changed the rules for applications, we hold every application as current for two years now. And so, so for instance, when Supervisor Madron did a really great job of soliciting applications because he had three people leave at the same time. So he has now filled his roster, but I only received three applications. So the other vacancies are still sitting there. And I can consistently bring it on consent, and we can consistently, you know, when it comes onto the consent calendar as vacancies, it automatically goes to the CAO's office, who then sends out a blast. It's really word of mouth seems to be the best advertisement, and that's, that's great. But I understand also that it is hard because when you don't have applicants from your districts, items that are being brought to the commission may not represent your area as well. And that's also been a challenge. I don't know a solution.
Well, one thing we know is that you don't actually have to be on the commission to bring an item to the commission.
Absolutely.
So if someone feels like they don't have the space to be on the commission, but has something they want to talk about with the commission, then by all means, they should definitely bring it to the commission.
And they do have very good public participation. When things arise in the community, they have that hotline established, and it's on the website. And they do get calls and information from that, which is amazing. One thing I did share with them, and I think sometimes it's not all, this process is very helpful because what I am learning is that sometimes commissioners don't understand the relationship between myself and you as the board. And so this, I hope, is generating more communications from the people that you are pointing to you, that they have direct access to you, that you might not be the one reaching out to them, but they can always reach out to the board. And I'm finding that we're definitely improving our process from our appointment process, letting them know, hey, you're appointed, and that means you communicate with your supervisor or myself, and I will communicate with the entire board for you on anything that it is that you feel relevant. Just opening that communication line has been an incredible asset to reviewing each of these boards and commissions in a deeper level.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone?
And I think historically, we're the smallest county with a Human Rights Commission. So in turn, it's probably for the smaller counties, it would be hard to get a group together. I've been very fortunate that my three members, I think, have been on there for 10, 14 years now, I think, for, a lot of them have been there a long time, and they asked to be reappointed. So I like the idea of everybody being able to go outside their district. I've been able to stay inside mine, I think. But I think one of the reasons we don't have as many issues, or we don't hear about as many issues, is the staff does a great job on dealing with. And the other thing is, they've had a very involved chair, I guess would be the thing. One of my appointees that, from day one, that just does a great job and has been here for as long as I've been around, Mr. Glover. And he takes personal pride in that. So I think that helps too. So whatever we change, I would like it to follow what they would like and what works for our staff, because we don't have an idea what it works. It's like Supervisor said, it's a great thing that, you know, that we have talked to them and everything else, but I think we should follow what they're asking for. Thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Wilson, then I'm going to go to public comment.
Great. And what I'm hearing from the commission is they're not asking for any particular change, other than to help them find a consistent place to meet and just continue to work on that. Is there anything else that was on that list?
No, my recommendation is to maintain, but it is board discretion.
All right, thank you very much.
So thank you for the report. Yeah, I agree with what Supervisor Bone said, that staff work really well with them and try to accommodate all these things. I think the current system's working. I use Facebook for these things, and I had a really great response on this recent one. I also would say, I mean, they do incredible work. A lot of it's kind of unseen, but when the whole ICE stuff started happening with the federal government, they convened a great meeting, brought in the sheriff, the DA, who were very responsive to that community. There was interpreter assistance that evening. It was a full house. There was a couple supervisors there. And it was really good and timely to be able to get some questions answered for community members and such. So the only change I would suggest is that they do such incredibly valuable work, and frankly, to maybe allocate $3,000 or $5,000 annually to their budget would be a drop in the bucket on our overall budget and may very well provide them with that help on not having to cancel meetings when planning commission cancels or being able to get interpretive services. So that's something I would certainly support. It's up to the board as a whole, but like I said, I think it's a drop in the bucket, and it could very much help them with some of the things that they're struggling with that we've heard. So that would not require an ordinance change. That would just be a supplemental budget request, I believe.
That's true. I would just like to say that there are 23 other boards and commissions.
I know. But of all of them out there, this one in particular has, maybe they all have some needs, I don't know. We've talked about that in regards to MICMAC as, you know, all that. I will tell you, the $5,000 for MICMAC has been a godsend, frankly, in terms of helping them do their business. And it's such a small amount of money, but whatever the board thinks is appropriate.
So I want to just echo what Ms. D'Amico said, that the value of our boards and commissions are all great. And I think that, you know, equitably, it would be hard to allocate monies to one and not others because they have, at times, all asked and struggle to do things without funding. Just my thoughts. I do appreciate the Human Rights Commission, but I appreciate all the boards and commissions. They work hard to inform our board. Supervisor, Tracy, do you want to add something? Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that out of those 23 boards and commissions, there are some that are ran by other departments that do have some resources that are given to them. But I feel like all the boards and commissions do have support from our staff as far as some basic resources. We provide space, you know, we coordinated so they are meeting at the same time that the planning commission is, who's picking up the tab for them for security, you know, copying, publishing, educating them. All of that is covered under our staff and our time. But some boards and commissions do have more financial support than others.
Supervisor Royo?
Yeah, I just want to share that I was able to go to, the Human Rights Commission recently held a training on constructive conversations. It was part of a series, and I was able to be part of the, part of the event. It was held at Humboldt Area Foundation. And the facilitator, Mary Jalinas, is someone who's worked in facilitation in the local community quite a bit. She volunteered her time to help support that event. So it was great to see the goodwill and, you know, support that the Human Rights Commission was receiving from the local community. I know they're really dedicated to this cause of helping people hold conversations where they talk across difference and develop those skills. And even though I have read, actually in the past, read Mary's book and knew a lot of the content, it was really great to practice those skills and be reminded of all of that. So just want to say that, you know, the Human Rights Commission is really striving to get out there and do community events that further their mission. I know all of our commissions are doing great work. I do agree with Supervisor Bushnell that it's, it's a, it would be, I guess it would be a slippery slope to start funding the commissions. And the MICMAC is very unique in its purview, and, you know, I think, I think it is, it does kind of stand alone. I would love to see down the line, if our finances improve, us have the opportunity to fund more of our commissions that don't have that revenue stream and don't have, and do have a lot of activity in the community. do have a lot of activity in the community. And the Human Rights Commission is one of those that I would certainly consider in the future. But I, I'm just so grateful for what they're doing. And yeah, I encourage folks, if you have the opportunity to go to one of their events to do so.
Thank you. I'm going to go out to public comment and we're going to start on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Thanks a lot. Doing everything you've said there is fantastic, especially Sheriff, first your staff, Tracy, working on this important topic. In this day and age, I think only it's been more important to have these people. Frequently, when you look at budgetary things, you look at matching funds, able to get grants. I think last budget, mid-year budget, you have like, I think last year, $465,000 that came up out of the blue because Tom Axon didn't need something for mowing or something. And that went straight into, I think, your, your C O's office in Anthony. I recommend when you have those things, first thing that comes to mind is that you're probably getting people's time for five cents an hour or something like that. And to leverage out a small amount of money, $3,000 to $5,000, I think is some of the best money you could spend, especially with the work that they do in the community. As a PR firm, they're fantastic tributaries, being receptive to hearing people's concerns and complaints. They do a lot of work for you folks. The leadership of Jim and I, the third law, he retired a little while ago, these people are real assets. And I strongly suggest that either now or the future, you put an item on there, go ahead and fund them for that $3,000 to $5,000. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I also, you know, for those of you who do take the time to go out there and try and get these people to join, you know, my understanding, if I could be corrected, I mean, watch some of these, they are desirable. So if I'm, if that's not true, I highly recommend that you make sure that the process that can be done, so people don't have to drive long distance. And I've always questioned why we can't, why do we need to have security during winter court sessions not open? My understanding, that's the reason we have to have security in the building, why we can't just lock down the elevators and, or lock down pathways for upstairs and not be security until these kind of meetings, but that's a different topic. Thank you for your speaking.
That's all on Zoom, Chair. Thank you. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion, please. Supervisor Bone?
With Mr. Ford in the room, one of the instances is canceled planning commission meetings. If they set up their meeting for a set Thursday throughout the year, we do have some times where there's no, but we can, I mean, a lot of our stuff, I mean, we're getting stuff that's, you know, for them to do all their work is six, eight months before we get it. I mean, nothing's ever four weeks in, in front of the planning commission. Can we just make sure they have a planning commission meeting that night? And I'm getting, I'm getting, I've got people waving at me. John Ford saying, yeah, that was okay. Tracy's saying, shut up, Rex, so.
I'm not. I'm saying that we have definitely worked with the planning commissioner clerk and with John or with Director Ford, where we've streamlined that process. So now we have a direct communication line. So we have more advanced notice when they're not having a meeting. We've addressed that issue so it's not last minute cancellation, so that then Human Rights then can coordinate better. So that process has been reviewed and definitely improved upon. It is, sometimes things just happen. I mean, as far as quorums and things like that with planning, so that's definitely been worked out with planning and human rights on ourselves.
I was going to note that, that they have, that has been approved of. But John could work a little harder maybe to make sure. And the nights that they can't, it doesn't happen, we just will have to pick up the security if that's the issue instead of re, because I'll tell you what, for a volunteer organization to come in, schedule everything around, cancel things, cancel whatever they may be doing on Thursday night, maybe they're going to go, but they cancel, I can't because I have a human rights commission, then we cancel out from them a week before. So, you know, I, if we did something like that, that could come to the tune of probably a few thousand dollars if he, if he did it a lot. But we're not going to do it a lot because I think John's got a commitment to it. So if we could work that out, so they have their meeting set, that we get a year in advance, if they want to switch, it's on them or they could do a daytime meeting, work with us. The other meetings, it'll be on John to make sure that he has a meeting or hopefully has a meeting to, to the best of your ability. I, I think the whole idea is, is working together with everybody to make one situation, you know, work.
I, I would be concerned of whose budget that would come out of. I know that the COB budget is very tight and a few thousand dollars could put them over. We've asked departments to, you know, not expand on that. And so, and I know that also Director Ford, if he can save money, is working towards that. So I would be curious to know whose budget that's going to come out of if, go ahead, Tracy.
I was going to say that it has happened a couple of times this past year and really the security charges were minimal and Human Rights ended up just paying for that security. We get backcharged by the sheriff for that time and then forward that bill to them and it comes out of their fund. It's not a lot of money, but it is money that they could be using for what they feel is more appropriate than paying for security. I think it's improved a lot, that process.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor.
And you say minimal, because I just heard $5,000 isn't that much money to us and it really is. But I, so I wouldn't have a problem taking it out of the sheriff's budget.
Supervisor Royal?
Hi, Sheriff Hansel. Good to see you today. I could tell you're in the room because we started lobbing things your way. I, I wanted to ask just for about a couple little things since we're talking about this. The Human Rights Commission, so I didn't realize, and this was on me, because we have a lot of commissions and I didn't realize that they didn't have to live in the district to be appointed for the district. So that changes my outreach, outreach strategy because I've heard from people who are students at Cal Poly Humboldt and live on campus, oh, I'd love to serve, but it seemed like they were, you know, not opening, that kind of thing. So could we add some language on the website? It says there are 15 members on this commission, three from each district, but could we add a sentence like, you don't have to live in the district to which you're appointed to apply or something like that?
I also just realized I didn't state that in my report, so definitely that's a change. We can also add that on to the application.
That would be great. Yeah, I think that might help. And then another thing I heard from someone who was interested in applying for commission, and this is broader, because I think all of them encourage you to, or require, if you apply online, that you upload a resume. Is that the case?
It's, it's on the original application that they can add that information because the template for boards and commission is very vague. It's very hard to be specific with each one, what they require. So it's just an opportu, it's not required. It's an opportunity for them to share some more insight with you. So that, that your outreach when appointing may not be as needed. If you just get a billing application with name, address, and I'd like to serve, then it's on you to find out why and what their interests are and do the more vetting process. If they attach a resume, then you have it all right in front of you so that that appointment could possibly happen sooner. But I'm willing to, whatever you would like to do on that application is fine with me.
I think on the online form, it, it does seem like a required field, so maybe we could say that it's optional. I, I just heard from someone who was a little, and maybe, you know, if someone's not willing to put together a resume, we don't want to appoint them, but, but who hadn't worked in a while and was feeling like that was gonna, like they were sort of defeated by the, they were willing to volunteer but defeated by that idea that they had to put together a resume or that, that they might look not like a good candidate because their resume was a little light. And I, I would just say anyone who has a genuine desire to serve and willingness to, you know, show up and, and contribute is, is welcome as far as I'm concerned, even if their resume isn't like particularly, you know, robust, that kind of thing.
Maybe we could change that to say like a personal statement versus resume. I think it would be a lot more relevant.
I would love that. What do you all think?
I think that's fine and I don't think that, does that, does it require an ordinance change? It's just direction. Yeah, I think it sounds fine. And I can say that resume sometimes is very defeating, like, I'm not going to do that.
Yeah. If people would like to attach a resume to provide additional information, that would be wonderful, but I, I feel like the way that it's, for the online form, it, it puts somebody off that I know of, so, thank you.
And I think that's all great valuable information and that's the point of this process is a lot of these, we've not had time or staff to deep dive into them for 20, 30 years. And so all of this is great information and input because we do need to make all of these boards and commissions more relevant. So absolutely take that as direction.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we don't do any changes, that we move forward the way it is. And thanks to staff for all the work and really working with the Human Rights Commission to identify and bring issues and update our board.
Second.
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes, thank you.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Yes, the next item is brought by me, the, consider the creation of an ordinance for banning overnight camping on Humboldt County owned properties. I want to say that this was not a negative item that came. It is not about removing houseless folks. It's about what can be accomplished if there was an, there was an ordinance that says that we could work with them. And I want to reference to, I initially left this pretty blank and I asked Sheriff Hansel and Director Mattson to come and do some updates. But I do want to just talk about a little bit about my district in the Dean Creek area, where there's private property there. And through the deputies down there, I went with the deputies and we identified quite a few folks that were in, on private land. And they, the, the landowners gave consent to the sheriffs to have those folks removed. But the sheriffs, the deputies did it so well. And then I connected also with show. We gave them a month. We helped them get their items out. We found some housing through the show. And what we found when we were addressing some of the other folks was that they didn't have any kind of commitment or desire to move because there wasn't a, a reason for them to, even though housing had been offered, show had engaged in them. And so I think that there's a very good way to do this, but to also, you know, encourage folks to seek that housing that can be available to them, which Southern Humboldt has done very well with the, the Housing For All unit down there. But we're not, we're finding some folks that feel very comfortable on those county properties. And so they don't feel the need to even try to seek that help, even when it's offered. And so I wanted, before we did a ton of work on this, I wanted for, for the board to weigh in in case it's not something we, or a direction we want to go. And so I have Sheriff Hansel and Director Mattson to report on how, for the sheriff, how he interacts and how his deputies do. And then Director Mattson on the costs that it keeps recurring us for cleaning up these properties. So whoever would like to go first. Thank you. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. I appreciate the, the invitation to address the board regarding this, this issue. To put it in context, we responded to about 1,500 calls over the last five years when it comes to camping. And we handle those calls a couple of different ways. If it's private property, we'll go, we'll assess those, those camps. Sometimes it's just an overnight camper. They haven't established, you know, a true grounding or residency on those properties. So we, we are the advocate for the property owner. We provide them, the person opportunity to leave because they're trespassing. And, and so a lot of times we resolve them. But there's other times where people have properties, you know, outside of Red Wave is a common area where people just camp. It's public land or private land and people just squat camp and they've established a residency essentially in these, in these areas. And, and so we have worked with the property owners to, to provide notices. And then we bring in supportive staff and we lead with compassion in these, in these circumstances where we're trying to steer people towards services and to try and care for their needs and provide them housing, food, medical care. And I think people would be shocked if they actually walked with us into these, into these unsheltered areas where people are, are struggling and to see how we treat them and to show that there is compassion beside them and also the deplorable conditions that they're living in. That we don't treat animals the way that people are leaving, living in some of these areas in Humboldt County. And, and so it's really tragic to see how some people are mentally ill or addicted to controlled substances and they allow themselves to live in really just awful conditions. And that it becomes a public health issue in these areas. And, and so we lead with compassion. We offer services and we provide opportunities for people to, to steer towards those services. And then we check back with them. If they, if they don't leave and we have a valid reason to make an arrest because they've refused to leave, then we will do that. And, and, and we will provide, we will, the things that are valuable on their site, we will box up and, and hold for them and, and then ultimately then clean up with the property owner of those areas. So that's on private property. On public land, you know, as you know, we had the Grants Pass decision that was recently overturned by the Supreme Court last year, June of 24, and which gave opportunity for cities and counties to establish ordinances, no camping ordinance, and it wasn't cruel and unusual punishment to, to provide these ordinances to the unsheltered. And so many counties are establishing ordinances throughout the state regarding how they should treat people, whether it's camping in vehicles, camping on public land and how, you know, how different counties are dealing with that. You know, so when we look at public land right now, the areas that we're concerned with, McKay Track has, has had issues with people that are camping, off Palmer Boulevard and as well as off Lucas Street. Those are three areas that come to mind. I know there's many more throughout, throughout the county, but, but our deputies have responded constantly to try and to warn people, to provide opportunities for people to move, move on. And, and so we have to provide no trespassing ordinance, you know, orders and, and those kind of things from, based on the county, that they are trespassing, they are, they are polluting the, the environment by, you know, urinating, defecating, disposing of, you know, of garbage, you know, throughout those, those camps. And so we are enforcing those laws in order to help people get to an area where they can become housed. And, but an ordinance would help in those, in those circumstances. And, and so we're here to, to provide that input or that feedback and to offer even studying that, you know, for a future ordinance.
Thank you. I wanted to add that when I, when I looked up how many counties and cities have start, you know, are trending this way, there's a widespread trend, more than two dozen California cities and counties have passed new ordinances or made existing ones stricter since a 2024 Supreme Court ruling. City specific ordinances, many have been passed, even Fortuna has one currently. And then county level examples, some counties have also passed their own ordinances. For instance, San Joaquin County has considered a ban and Santa Clara County has an ordinance prohibiting unpermitted camping in, in documented unrestricted areas. There are, there are areas in, of county property that are for camping and those are permitted. Various restrictions, and I didn't bring any ordinance specific because I wanted the board to weigh in, but varying restriction, restrictions, the specific details of these bans vary. Some are very comprehensive with others are more nuanced, such as San Diego's ban that is only enforced if shelter beds are available. So if there is a place for them to be and they aren't taking those services up, then that would be where this could come into play, which I, I will reference to Southern Humboldt and the Bear Canyon Bridge, which is on both sides as county property and is a tributary right into the South Fork of the Eel that has been cleaned up so many times. And we, thank goodness, have Friends of the Eel River, or excuse me, the cleanup, Eel River Cleanup Crew that goes out every Thursday and gets thousands of pounds of garbage. And they, they go on county properties. That's where they service the most. And it, it is redundant for them. It is expensive, you know, but they are so dedicated, but it's been for years. And those, that Bear River area, as well as some areas along the Dean Creek area, which had huge fire, this the Dean Creek area, which had huge fire this last summer because the deputies, and I did walk all those camps, and I went in, and some of those folks asked for extensions. They were given a month. We helped them pack up their things, and then show found them places to live. And they said, oh, I need another week. And we, the deputies allowed that with the property owners. It worked really great. And we had one fire in the Dean Creek area this year, where we were having one a week previously. So those were just some thoughts. And then I wanted Tom to, sorry, Director Mattson, to talk about the financial portion of this.
So, good morning, Chair Bushnell, members of the board, Tom Mattson, Director of Public Works. Public Works is really on the tail end of this issue. It's really the sheriff and DHHS that take the lead. We run anywhere from fifty to one hundred and fifty thousand direct dollars for disposal of illegal waste every year, sometimes more. But that's not all of our indirect cost. Many times we were, you know, directly hand in hand where the sheriff has an issue, say at Fields Landing where there was a big issue there, and it was really a signing problem at first. But then they just moved out and onto the road, and we had to follow up with a no parking ordinance. And that has worked for us, and that's been our tool. It is time consuming. I know the sheriff's department is waiting on us right now for another problem area that they have to get the no parking ordinance through. It's what we used out on the peninsula, which took basically two years to get the ordinance approved because I had to go through the Coastal Commission. It was a joint partnership. So an overall public ordinance would probably be very helpful in shortening the timeline of when these issues come up. Again, I'm not the expert on these issues. We do not segregate illegal dumping by campsites out from illegal dumping that we collect everywhere. People dump out at Grab Park. They're not camping there. You know, the McKay Track was a very specific issue that required a large commitment of the sheriff to deal with one very specific individual, going out there repeatedly, repeatedly having to deal with this individual because they could not move him. So just to take a quick look, we do, again, hire new beginnings, John Shelter, just as everybody else does. He's got a good program to go in, notify people that they're coming in for a cleanup, try to get them in touch with all the services that are out there, and then come in for the cleanup. You know, underneath Bear River Bridge, there was a fire, and it did some damage to the bridge. But just going through over the last two years, you know, Redway Garberville, that's the specific bridge area, over a ton of garbage was taken out from underneath that bridge and had to be disposed of. Lolita General Area, over fifteen hundred pounds, including nine tires, two televisions, and a freon containing refrigerator, which costs even more to dispose of. Oric, twenty-three hundred pounds, including twenty-eight hours clearing through the willows to get to the campsites on the levee system in order to get that cleaned up. And again, that, the levee has ordinances, the parks have ordinances, but we still have the problem. But we have the areas that are ancillary, you know, Fernbridge area is a constant issue. I think the sheriff was out there a couple of weeks ago. Over the last two years, almost two tons, seven tires, eleven, one hundred and ten pounds of e-waste and one TV. And this is all on the river bar, basically, in the flood zone plane. And when it floods Fernbridge, we generally get the homeless encampment flooded. And if it's not cleaned up, that's where all that garbage is going. And that is not a good thing. Bay Trail McKay, almost two thousand pounds, Lucas Street, nine hundred pounds. Little River, we have a problem site with right off the end of the road. You could call it public, you could call it private, but they're using the public road to access the area. Three hundred pounds, including ninety-four pounds of e-waste. And Wymore Road, just outside of Arcata, in concert with Arcata and Caltrans and the sheriff, a joint effort there to get out, over five hundred pounds, two tires, and again, another twelve hours, hiring the contractor to cut through into the brush to be able to access these places to clean them up, and to try to get to the people and get them to the services that will help them pull their boots back up. So that's basically all I have. I do think an overall ordinance could probably help. It would certainly help with the timelines when the sheriff comes to us with a problem and say, hey, how can we do this? And it takes me ninety to one hundred and eighty days easy to get an ordinance through and approved. So that's where we stand on it. It's really, it's beyond Public Works, it's beyond the sheriff, it's beyond DHHS. This is an entire community issue. It's all hands on board. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess, are there any questions of the board or thoughts? Supervisor Bone?
And you named off a few of the places that I've been fighting. You know, McKay's absolutely terrible. I thank goodness I've got a couple deputies go out there, but there's no bite. And again, that's not county owned property. But in all honesty, we're going to drive them on to private properties. They're not leaving. I don't see any of them leaving town. So instead of playing a game of whack-a-mole, and you're right, Sheriff Hansel, there's a lot of people out there that need help. But it's time we kind of differentiate who needs help, and who are actively taking advantage of us. And, I mean, we've all, or I have, lost property, and I know it's gone into the McKay. All those people along McKay have been having issues along there. Fields Landing, we put, I mean, thank you, Tom, but we put up ten loads of rock, fourteen signs, the boat, the Jimmy Smith Boat Launch, which should be a special place, is far from being special. Because now they go in at, they'll park somewhere on the side street, and then they'll run to it at sunrise, and stay till they are run out. Not sunset, even though that's signed. They will run out at sunset when they're told. We can't have a deputy down at Fields Landing every night. I understand that. So this sounds great, and I appreciate this being brought forward. But in the areas that they've done it, nobody's going, DHHS says, we will handle that, we'll handle that. And you're right, they need housing. We don't have enough housing. And the problem is, those people have been in housing. The reason they're out there is because they can't stay in housing. They are not very good tenants, a lot of them. Not all of them. I'm not trying to put it, because you can't put them all in one silo. There's health, I mean, there's health reasons, there's mental health reasons, there's financial reasons. And the reasons of the people that are coming to our garage and steal stuff, and it's really easy to hide out in the woods rather than go back to the apartment, because they have my address if I'm in an apartment. So I don't know, and I mean, we're putting it out there. But I mean, right now, we're spending the biggest part of our budgets on these things. Public Works, I mean, I've, I can't tell you how much garbage. And I've had to put in twelve thousand dollars worth of gate so they can't come in there at night, that we have to close every night out at Redwood Fields. And then, you know, but we still have to have walking access. And it's like a parade at night. So, and I mean, that's, it is, I used to have twenty-five, thirty people walk their dogs every day around there. They have ten o'clock in the morning and stuff. They do not feel comfortable because I've got, I think his name was Colin, we've got a guy out there now that is causing more environmental damage than a logging operation. He's digging ditches on trails that are just washing away. He's putting roadblocks up so people can't drive their vehicles, sheriffs, public, you know, safety vehicles. There's fires happening out at the McKay for the whole length of it. And it's actually starting to cause a problem for people that are walking out there that run across him, because he's out there with an axe with his shirt off. And sheriff has had maybe thirty contacts with him, forty contacts with him. But yet he's out there every night again, causing issues. I mean, I agree with this a hundred percent, but I don't know. I'd love to see an end result, and then reevaluate in a year, because I don't have a problem with this. But in a year, if we're still having the same problems we're having, and it's going to be extended, you know, it was like, you know, the devil's playground. How many people did they say they had living down there? And that didn't fix an issue that just spread them out farther and farther apart. And that's what's got to be addressed. And we're not going to, we can't fix it, because they're coming to California, it seems like. Numbers are up. New people are on the street every day. I don't know what the answer is. But voting something in that's not going to fix it, it's going to make us, but they're still going to come. And sheriff, you're not going to be able to patrol them. Because in all honesty, a lot of our neighbors want to see you in the neighborhood where those guys are going while you're patrolling their homeless place. It's a vicious circle. And I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just, you know, I have a pretty good grasp of the obvious usually. So.
So I agree. However, this is just another tool. And if they're, and it could be written into the ordinance if there's available space in shelters, or I'll reference to the Southern Humboldt area. And this is largely why I wanted to talk about this, because they're, Southern Humboldt Housing Solutions For All is doing, they got a grant through DHHS, and they are doing a kind of a tent pallet situation down there. And they are going to have space, and they have been addressing and helping relocate folks off of private property, trying to engage folks that are on public property. But they don't have, the sheriff can't say, you have an option, you need to go, because there's no ordinance. Also, DHHS with Redwood Rural has rehomed about forty-five folks from down in the Southern Humboldt area. But it is, you know, becomes hard when you don't have a mechanism to say, here's your option, this is a better option, and we want to help you, especially for a very problem person. And I don't like to categorize people like that. But it also, the community in my district is begging for something, and begging for options. And I agree with Supervisor Bone that it has to be more. But I think it's a lot of tools that work, and are options to address this issue. It's not going to be singularly, one thing is going to solve it. But it is an option that can help. And in the ordinance, it can be put in there if there's housing available, if there's this. Because also, you know, yes, I agree, relocating them is going to move them around. But if there's housing available, then they need to know that camping there is not their option, and that they, that there's some help that could help them. It's just my thoughts. Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I appreciate this being brought forward. It's an important one. Oh, you mean the light's supposed to be on? Yeah, I appreciate this discussion being brought forward. It's an important one. Was it Grants Pass or Boise?
Grants Pass.
Grants Pass. Okay, that was different than the Boise decision.
Yeah.
So there's been two different things. Boise let it happen. Grants Pass said no longer. Okay, gotcha. It's so complicated. I mean, one thing that's really clear to me is if we start cutting SNAP and food stamps and healthcare and everything else, the numbers are going to continue to increase. Because a lot of families are, a lot of people are literally one paycheck from being part of this group of people looking to be housed. So how we vote matters, I would say, without getting too political. That's a really big deal when we spend all our money on tax deductions for the rich, but we don't take care of just basic common needs for people. But hey, the country's kind of waking up to that right now, maybe. We'll see how that goes. So that's the big, big picture. At the community level, I mean, I know that Supervisor Bushnell's done a lot of work in Southern Humboldt with show and with her community, has a property that's been a problem property that she's been trying to deal with for a long time on many levels. I've got a lot of property owners in McKinneyville, they'd call up and demand services, you know, Michelle's not one of them per se. But, you know, like, you need to come and deal with this. And I'm like, well, why don't you fence your property? Why don't you do something? And they, they want all these services. And I'm like, you know, we're going to start billing you.
True.
These private landowners, you know, for the sheriff's time, for shelters' time, for our community trash bash, which Scott Bender and Pac Out Green put on every two months. Yeah, we're revisiting the exact same places over and over again. And in three months, it gets three foot deep in this debris. It's really scary from a health perspective. Just, and even for the people doing the cleanups, you know, with all the needles and just the hazardous stuff, it's crazy. So we're not solving the problems. For a while there, I was really hopeful that our camping ordinances, our tiny home ordinances, all these things we've been doing that John and Director Ford in the department have been trying to put forward, were going to be some of the solution, where we might have, you know, places for people to go. Because housing is not affordable. I mean, no matter what you do, that's not going to solve the problem for some of these people. And as Supervisor Bushnell said, there, and Supervisor Bone, there are a number of people that just really aren't going to ever go into those housing options, no matter what they are. Their lifestyle, their way of surviving is one of living in the woods. And that's, a lot of times, it's a high proportion of veterans, frankly, which is, God, that's a really sad deal, how that works. In McKinneyville, you know, I've been trying to talk with people about these issues and figure out solutions. And I see all these massive, large church parking lots. McKinneyville has more churches than I think almost anywhere I've ever seen, and a lot of big empty lots. And there was a time in the past where churches were very engaged and involved in trying to help with these kinds of issues. When I grew up in Orange County, there were, you know, hobos that lived in the Orange Co's, out in the middle of the Orange Co for a lot of the year and stuff. But now it's way beyond that. But I'll say to people, hey, you know, you've got this problem in your neighborhood. If there's a wooded area in your neighborhood, you've got camps. Anywhere there's places to kind of burrow in. And I said, so, and they're unsanitary, there's no, you can't bring services to them in that condition. So what if we were to work with a church and create a sanctuary parking lot, a safe camping area fenced with services? But then the money for all that is, Michelle can tell us back there in the audience, has been disappearing. For a while there, it looked like there was getting to be more for Arcata House, for show and others. And show got some big grants. But as I'm hearing it, those monies are getting harder and harder to come by. But the idea was that, well, what if we created, you know, a safe place for people to camp, and be in their cars, and we could bring services? There'd be toilets and dumpsters, and maybe shower setup, or at least the shower caravan from AHA. And it's still in your neighborhood, but it's now sanitary. And we can start moving some of those people into services and stuff. How would that work for you? And people are like, well, I still don't like it, but maybe I'd kind of give it a try, you know? But then there's no money to do it anymore, right? So I mean, this ordinance isn't going to solve the problem. It is a tool, I agree with that. It's a tool in the toolbox. With private land, it's trespassing. And I appreciate the deputies that have helped try and work with that in McKinneyville. That's our prime area. But Willow Creek has issues. Oric has always had issues along the levee and the river bar. And when the Green Valley Motel was there, it was like a, you know, back and forth between the motel and the river bar and all this kind of stuff. So I don't know what the answer is. I got to say, in my seven years here on the board, this is probably the most difficult problem that we have to deal with, much more than potholes and the rest of it. Now we're starting to make progress on potholes, thank goodness. But this one, I don't know what the answers are. Is this one of the tools, perhaps? But right now, I don't know where they're supposed to go. If they can't be on private land, they can't be on county land, where, then they're going to be in the storefronts on the street until they get moved in the morning, and all kinds of gnarly things are happening there. I do believe that there may be some county properties that could potentially be safe camp areas. You know, at one time, we were trying to do an inventory of that, look at all our properties. Lucas Street was always brought up where the big fill site was, and other places. Most often, when we've looked at these, they don't really work. But, and then there's Caltrans surplus property, you know, over there by the election officers, that big plateau right there that has often been camps, probably could house, you know, fifteen tents and different things. But we've never been able to get to the place where we're able to identify these surplus properties that maybe could be used. And then again, the money is the issue. Who's, you know, one of the things about Yee-Haw, Yee-Haw had a lot of problems, but it did house thirty, forty, fifty people for twenty, twenty-five years. I wish that Charles Garth was more responsible, and it could have been brought up to health standards and the rest of it. But the interesting thing about Yee-Haw was that they managed themselves. It didn't cost the county anything, frankly. They managed themselves. And if somebody was doing heavy drugs, they were booted out. If they were a danger to the children, they were booted out. Whereas when you set up a sanctioned camp and all this stuff, we've got to have twenty-four, seven staffing, and it's a fortune. You're starting to talk about half a million dollars a year just to kind of set it up and manage it, if not more. So I don't know what the solution is. I really don't. And I, this to me is just going to make it even harder for people to find a place to just survive. So I have issues with it from that perspective. But I appreciate the discussion, appreciate Supervisor Bushnell for bringing it forward. I certainly don't have the answers, you know. As I said, it's complicated, it is all get out. So, anyway.
Thank you. I think, you know, it requires a lot of things, and having a lot of tools. I am not foreign to this. My mom was homeless on the streets of Garberville for ten years, and she died at forty-nine. And she died at 49 on the streets of Garberville underneath the Bear Canyon Bridge. Offered her services, she had places to go. But because she was not told she couldn't be in this area, she was comfortable there. And it was a terrible place to live for her. And it was not sanitary. Those areas are still happening. And I'm not asking for this board to consider moving people around. I'm asking for some help with solutions that could happen. When you have an opportunity for someone to be somewhere, for instance, the show, who has the funding, has the staffing, has the beds, and people aren't utilizing those services. If we don't have a no camping ordinance on, on public properties, they don't have to, they can just be there. But if they have an opportunity to be somewhere and the deputies can say, "This is an opportunity for you, this is a place for you to be instead of on this property that is county property." And the community is begging for it, for some help. And I understand everybody says this isn't going to work. Sitting here doing nothing is not working either. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, this is certainly a topic where there are no easy answers. I just have a few thoughts that I wrote down. And I've been thinking about this a lot since I saw the agenda and learned we're going to be talking about this. So, you know, I think, thank you for helping me understand where this was an issue on county property. I mean, I can think of some sites, but it was helpful to think of the breadth of them. Because I think people are conflating in the greater community, issues on, on private property with issues on county property. So just, you know, being laser focused on county property is important. I will say, as much as I understand that it's a tool in the tool belt, I have been down this road before with developing. I know camping ordinance on, on public property for a different jurisdiction and, you know, it's no surprise, City of Rica. But it, it proved, in my opinion, to not be very utilized or helpful. But it did create a lot of strife. And I, I have frankly, very little appetite to kind of go down that road again. Because almost always, there was another law or rule in place already on the books that could be utilized. Like no overnight parking, you know, civil or criminal violations, environmental health issues that, that could be used as a tool. I realize there are times when that's not the case. And I think if we are going to go down this path, I would, I would want to try to be targeted to perhaps county parks or the community forests where there are, there are specifically a lot of issues or places that have a lot of environmental sensitive habitat, something like that. But I, you know, I recognize also that when people are penalized for this, in some cases, it might be, "Well, you can't be here." So that is the, the thing that urges folks to make a change. But a lot of times, it's just like misdemeanors that add up. And then to what and to what end? I, I think it's, it's not, I, I just haven't seen it be particularly successful except for a handful of instances where people were sort of already primed for a change in their lives. And that was very few and far between. I will also note that if dumping, I recognize that dumping is a huge issue that we have, but it's often housed people. When you go to clean up, I mean, there are definitely abandoned camps, no doubt about that. Where there are a lot of, there's a lot of really gross waste and people just not in a position to kind of haul it out of wherever it got to. But so much of the time in these locations where people are driving their waste there, it is housed people. And, you know, if we're trying to address dumping, the, the thing that's most supported by data is mandatory curbside pickup so that people are required to get garbage service. I realize that's not going to work for much of the county, but that is the, the tool that, you know, has been most correlated with a reduction in dumping. And, you know, lastly, I'm, I'm also pretty reticent about operating a sanctioned camp. The City of Rica did do that for quite some time and had a rotating camp location. And, you know, it was a similar time of year, like winter conditions. And so we had to deal with flooding on site, you know, environmental health issues, sanitation, spread of infectious diseases. You know, it was, it was difficult to afford the management and oversight that were required as well as adequate sanitation facilities for people. So it really is sort of a massive, not only a liability, but, you know, then, then you become the, the entity creating the conditions on the site. And that was really proved to not be doable unless we want to fund it at a degree that's quite significant. So I think if we want to go down that road, I'm, I'm open to the discussion. And I think it's a very, to do it right is, is quite a challenging proposition. I would love to see the faith community and the nonprofit community step up to help. And I think we have, we certainly have structures in place to allow for that. And we could be partners, but I'm not seeing the capacity at this moment in time, given the other amenities and shelter space, I shouldn't say amenities, but the other things to get people through that, that we do have in place. Overnight, you know, emergency shelter system and all the things that we've worked on. They're not perfect and they don't work for everybody, but those do exist. And, you know, if we can use existing tools to shunt people to those, you know, I, I just will say, a lot of times, you can find that if someone's camping on county property, they're also doing other things that, you know, could, could be, could be the mechanism for enforcement if we wanted to, you know, kind of require folks to move. And again, that might not be the tool for every place. So if we want to do this in a more targeted means about specific areas where we're having a big problem, I'm, I'm open to that. Those are my thoughts for now.
Supervisor Bone.
Does this, does an ordinance work for you guys better than having nothing and just saying that there's beds available? Because if there's beds available, why do I have people out at McKay? Why do I have people at, why do we have field signing? Why do we have people under the Bear Bridge? Why do we, why do we have all these people out there if we have? And, and it's not, you talked to Brian and everything else. A lot of these people do not pass muster, muster to get into their shelter. They, the doors aren't just open for having a place to sleep. I, I actually in the, spent a couple nights at the extreme weather shelter out at Faith Center. And those were open to anybody. And to get them out of the weather for obvious reasons. But does this, does an ordinance, and, and I know, I know with the Sheriff's Association, you guys talk about this on a regular basis, and I know Tom with Public Works. Does this work or doesn't it work? Or is it just a tool that won't be used? I, I understand the tool formula, but I've got a, I've got an edger that does the infield out at the ball field that about nine years ago, that works really good. But I found out how it works a lot easier and it just sits there. So is it a tool that will be used?
Yes, it will be used. The thing is, you know, when it comes to, like, the old decision before the Supreme Court threw this out, we had to prove that we, that, you know, there was space available, right? If not, then people can camp whatever they want on public land. So this is an opportunity for us to have conversations with people, to also protect the public, you know, that are utilizing these open spaces, the McKay Track, public land, public parks, and those kind of things too, so they can utilize it freely and safely. And so you're going to provide us, and again, this is your ordinance, right? I think what is proposed is that an ordinance is created through input from, you know, your subject matter experts as well as the board and the public to create an ordinance that we all can live with, that emphasizes that there'll be safe public parks and public land and that we can steer people towards services within the community and to not allow public camping. That's, that's the goal, I think, of this, of, of creating such ordinance like this. So, and it would be, again, a tool for us to utilize.
Tom, can I get a?
Well, Public Works doesn't do any of the enforcement or moving people off the property. But we do get regular complaints about specific individuals that are on our properties that the sheriff makes repeated visits to. And in those kinds of instances, this would be a clear ability of the sheriff to nip a problem in, before it really grows. You know, we, we had an instance where we had a person out there that was scaring a lot of people. And eventually, he did make a threat and was be able to move off. And in fact, wasn't 51-50'd, I think. But it took the sheriff so much time and effort and our staff stressing over every single day of an encounter with this person who was very threatening. With that kind of situation, yes, this would be very, very helpful. But no, this is not the ultimate solution. We do not have a solution for the homeless issue. We only have tools to make it easier for society.
Go ahead.
So this is something that will help two of our largest departments with, with general fund money. He's not including DHHS. And they are, they are asking for this help, fully aware that this isn't the fix-all, super glue, going to put it all back together. But it gives them another tool to get where they're going. So I, I know we've all got, you know, and, and, you know, and the reference to Yee-Haw earlier just irked the crap out of me. Because that was 25 years of guy collecting rent, not doing what was asked of him. And at the end, 25 years later, we realized, oh, maybe, much to the dismay of all the neighbors up there, most of the neighbors up there. So I, I'm just, that's over. That should be getting cleaned up, except for that phony land transfer, property transfer.
And Yee-Haw did cost the county money and continues to. I'm going to go to public comment on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, caller 2229. I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name's Amy Scott. I am a long-term Humboldt County resident. And I am currently a second-year master student in social work at Cal Poly. I led a kind of group of social workers last year when we were working with you to discuss the homeless ordinance 1040 that they, anti homelessness that they had created. And I have a really long annotated bibliography, including about 85 sources from everywhere, from the American Bar Association, the American Medical Association, just about every well-respected academic, rigorous research institution you can imagine that says criminalizing homelessness does not work. Every single time, like, you've mentioned it here and there. I appreciate Natalie bringing in some of the things about how it just kind of passes the buck on. And I just want to, like, when we talk about the Grant Pass decision being overturned, that was along the partisan lines. And Justice Sonia Sotomayor's defense is probably one of the most beautiful written defense that has happened, where she wrestles with what it means to be human, what it means to be American, what it means to support one another. Criminalization only serves to further marginalize individuals, to further push them into more desperate situations and doesn't actually solve the issue of homelessness, which is a lack of affordable housing. I cannot stress about these research institutions, the lack of affordable housing is the reasoning of homelessness. And what we do in America is we individualize these problems. We say, "Oh, this person is addicted, oh, this person is X, Y, or Z." But these are not personal, it may feel personal, but it is anecdotal evidence. When you were talking about your experience with your mother, Michelle, when you're talking about individuals within our community, that is anecdotal evidence and does not, should not be what we use as prudent policymakers to write policy, to create policy, to enforce policy. When, in our community, we have, we're lucky to have the wisdom of Chief Judge, Chief Judge of the York Tribunal Court, Justice Abbe Abinadi. And one of the things that she said when speaking to our cohort was, "When someone has arrived in her courthouse, it is not what has that person done wrong, but it is what, what have we as a community failed to do to support this person?" When we are talking about individual communities who are suffering and struggling, these deplorable questions, I just, Sheriff Hansel's language about the mentally ill or addicted, those addicted to controlled substances, allowing themselves to live in deplorable conditions is not.
Sorry, you ran out of time. Caller 9507, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ariel Hiltonberger. And I am calling in about this because I agree with the, the previous caller in that, you know, we need to use evidence to support this issue. And if you want people to throw stuff away, then you should provide places for them to do that. There are, there are very few receptacles in our county for the public to use, even on public land. And if you want people to desiccate in places that are okay to desiccate in, then you should provide public restrooms. There are so many businesses that do not allow people to use their restrooms anymore. And so where else can they go? There's like one, two public restrooms, maybe in Old Town? And there, there's just not that many. Like, if you want people to be housed, give them affordable housing. If you want people to dispose of their garbage in like a specific way, then provide them the means to do that. If you want them to desiccate where you want, then give them a place. Like, I, I agree that tools are needed. And it's not a, an issue that can be easily solved. But also, like the previous caller, penalizing people and pushing them further away from solutions by making it so that they get charges against them or, I mean, having the sheriff go out instead of a social worker. Like, why aren't people going out that can actually help them instead of just people going out and being like, "No, you have to leave this place." Like, why aren't case managers or somebody else going out and trying to help these people? Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
I always, when people come up and they have all kinds of expertise and this knowledge, that knowledge, it sounds very well spoken. I always ask those people, "Well, what is the solution?" And if there is a solution, how come you haven't implemented it? I strongly support you moving forward with this ordinance. I think it's a tool that's necessary. I don't have a solution, I'm not claiming to be that smart. I didn't know, I wanted to mention, they have a living death in McQuillie Call, I'm just saying. Anyway, I want to mention that I just finished about 11 month's battle. Somebody was trespassing my property, could not get them off. I just got an estimate of cleaning up for one person, to be honest, of $9,710. So that's what the public pays, and that's what, that's what the, you guys pay also as far as cleaning things up. Affordable housing in, in California and most of the United States is, is a total fallacy. It's not affordable housing. Affordable housing down here is where the Mexico is with us. And until it changes, is where somebody can go ahead and, and buy a $500 parcel and make payments for 10 years and are allowed to go ahead and put up the plywood they can find. Maybe they get some bridge from people, they work for the material, to need and have a place to live, maintain sanitation, which is not top of the line, but it's something that's functional. And it's, you know, our society changes the rules and regulations regarding those kind of things and pervert, a launch ship of that kind of nature. You just in the past, there's no solution, no matter what the prior speaker said. Strongly supporting you moving forward with this ordinance. And I wish a lot of people would go out there like I did, the prior speaker here. And I wish a lot of people would go out there like I did, the prior speaker here, and actually watch the sheriff working with the social workers onsite to talk to these people that happen. People sometimes from some of the health organizations go out and that happens. But that is being done. I wish today, the sheriff and all of those who participate in that kind of process. Thank you all for this week today.
That's all on Zoom, Chair.
Public comment in the room. CNN on closed public comment and bring it back to the board.
A couple of things. Tom, when, I guess what, a question I have of, about, you know, sort of the example that you gave where this person's coming back and doing all these things, I mean, it sounds like, and as Supervisor Arroyo had mentioned, already doing illegal things, like they're, you know, they're causing stress and, you know, threatening violence and other things. So I'm just kind of wondering, how would this ordinance help under, or an example, this would help in a situation where people are already engaged in illegal activities and environmental health violations and those sorts of things? Like, what's the, so I'm saying, like, what does this give that, that, you know, what does this change?
Since I have no police authority, I'm going to have to defer to the sheriff on that because we can only report the problems. We can't physically, you know, we try to help people, we try to encourage them, but Public Works has no enforcement capability. We can give them a ticket if they're doing something in the county park for certain things, but at the time, the Mackay Track wasn't a county park. And that's kind of how we solved that problem. We did bring it into the park system. So then the park system rules applied. But we have many areas in the county that aren't in the parks or in the road right of way. And, you know, our Fernbridge site is a perfect example of that. It's a gravel extraction bar on the Eel River that a lot of people have used for a long time for recreation. And over the last 10, 15, 20 years, has turned into an encampment location.
Right. And it was hard to control for those, some of those recreation activities were very illegal as well, including firearms and other things and bonfires that left big messes and stuff like that, too. So, I mean, we've had these environmental issues and behavioral issues and public safety issues in that space, both from people who are housed and then I guess now some people that are also unhoused. So maybe this is then a better question for the sheriff, which is if they're already engaging in activities that are enforceable, what's, what's, what does this do? What has this changed that dynamic?
So how this changes things is that, number one, if there's a camping ordinance that prevents someone from camping on public land, it invites a conversation that we can have with that individual. So they're violating that particular ordinance in front of us. As we walk up to on someone who may be, you know, in a camp, if there's no camping ordinance, there may be an illegal fire there that was there. There may be evidence that they're defecating or disposing of hazardous materials illegally dumping in the area. We don't see them doing these violations, but they exist in that area. So we know, we can see it, but to prove who did it, we can't do that. But we can prove that they're actually physically there in a campsite, camping illegally at that point in time. And so that's, that's what we can do. We can notice them because, you know, there's circumstantial evidence that they're doing all those things, but we can't necessarily provide that circumstantial evidence as, as proof in, you know, something that may be an infraction or maybe a misdemeanor in court. But if we address the problem, which is illegal camping, ultimately, we can address those ancillary problems as well.
Okay. And I just want to address some comments or, you know, around the concept that people are coming from other places or that sort of thing. For the most part, the data shows the majority of folks are people from here. And the fastest growing population we have now are elderly people in terms of like, in terms of like risk of becoming homeless. That has a lot to do with housing, frankly, it really does, because if people on fixed incomes were, then the cost of housing is rising much faster than, than their fixed incomes. And then when they're forced to move for some reason, finding another place to live becomes impossible. I think the city of Arcata has a no camping ordinance. I think part of these ordinances are about how they get, how they are applied.
True.
And then, and it's, and I think you guys were speaking to that. It's like, there's, there's a lot of variability in not just the construction of an ordinance, but then, but then really the, you know, how it's applied, just like all of our ordinances. And, and so I, I understand it in, in terms of as we manage properties, we want to make sure that we have the flexibility and the ability to do these things. That, or, but like saying these things, I mean, just manage the properties in general, whether we manage them for people camping or not camping. I mean, that's just, or whatever, all the other activities that may or may not occur on our public properties. This is, I do think that, while it's, it's still, we still have the same problem if people are just packing up their stuff and then moving, where are they moving to? And that's, that's a real, this doesn't solve that. It's just, it just doesn't. I know, I do know that sometimes, and I will say, some folks really, some folks do take advantage of that change that occurs and, and they get the help they need and things are happening. Some people don't, sort of a lateral move, and some people actually, it's, it is a pretty negative impact on them. And we have to understand that there's, there's a variety of outcomes that occur. It's not all terrible and it's not all good, you know? So for me, it's, I mean, I'm just going to say this, this isn't a priority for me. I'm not, I'm not afraid of the conversation moving in, in a future tense, but we do have, remember, which, let me ask you this question, which department do you think would be formulating this? Where, where's the staff time that would happen to actually do, do that work? Would it be in Public Works? Would it be our planning division? Would it be out of the sheriff's office? How would that work if we were to make an effort?
Well, we could get a committee together. We could get a working group together and that could consist of Public Works, Sheriff's Office, code enforcement, members of the board. And we could, you know, essentially, there's other ordinances throughout the state that we could emulate and, and take pieces of, of ordinances, maybe locally, and figure out what's, what's good. One of the things that I would think would be a part of this ordinance is diversion, right? In order to provide, you know, some enforcement action on someone is, is diverting them into a program which negates the criminal element, right? The criminal charge, all this other stuff. If they divert into a program where they get off the street or they're in, you know, a shelter or they're, what they're going to DHHS and they're not camping anymore, then there's no criminal charges that, you know, would be, would be, you know, pressed against them, so to speak. So there's a lot of different things the ordinance can do. And again, it can be creative here in our county to fit our needs and what we think, you know, are best for our community and our citizens while protecting the public owned land. So there's a lot to consider and it doesn't have to be draconian. It doesn't have to be, you know, heavy handed. It just addresses an issue, a problem, because there are those, some of those people that will just refuse to leave, that are creating all those, those problems for us in our community that violate the rights of others. And that's essentially what laws are about, is to be in a civil society and if someone wants to enjoy a community park, a Mackay Track, trail and those kind of things, and there's someone that's preventing them from doing that, you know, it's their rights, the, the other person's rights that are infringed upon. So, so I think those, those are the outliers that really the ordinance would really address. But everyone else, you know, there's, there's opportunities for diverting.
And I would say in a civil society, you know, we would have, we have some expectations around the availability of housing, the availability of healthcare, the availability of, you know.
Absolutely. Take care of your family. One things that we don't see in America that everywhere else seems in the world, they take care of the family when someone is, is, you know, is sick, you know, or destitute, that they bring them into their house, they take care of them, including elderly parents. You know, all those things that, you know, we'd like to see in society that don't exist here. And, but, you know, so it was a comment about churches. Absolutely. Churches should be stepping up and helping out, you know, in these circumstances at this point in time. But unfortunately, that is not happening.
Supervisor, go on.
Are we, and just out of, and maybe Michelle can help with this answer. 13, 14 years ago, we had a TAP program and TAP used to take, it was up to 36 hours from the time they brought someone in till they could actually get them on the bus or out of town. Well, the problem with that being in that 36 hours, they were getting ready to go at their lowest point. They'd either go get a fix or get something else and then they didn't want to go. And, and much to the help of DHHS and stuff, they lowered that to about seven and a half, eight hours. You were ready to go, they cleaned you up, they called somebody and everything else. Is TAP still, I used to get a monthly report on TAP and I don't get that anymore, which makes me think, is TAP still active? Do you still use that? I mean, as a, as a tool to say, do you want to go home? And I understand to be a residency, they've had to have had a job or been here for, you know, it's, but, but the thing is, is TAP being used to its fullest extent, and I'm not talking about dumping, because I'm, you know, talking with Betty and stuff, there's still a little bit of that and stuff. But I mean, is TAP still a viable program in our, not, yeah?
The county has a transportation assistance program and as far as I know, it is still up and running. And it is something to where there are members of DHHS that actually call to make sure that someone on the other end will receive them, right? That's a very important aspect, that we're not dumping them, we're not transporting them somewhere where they're not going to receive help. And so if those things are set up, those, that communication is there, they'll provide an opportunity to get that person a bus ticket to that location and so they can get the assistance that they need. And I know Betty has her own program.
Yeah.
That, you know, if people need to be transported somewhere, then, then that is there.
And I did appreciate your response that a civil society, families were a lot stronger and took care of each other. Now they said, let the county take care of them. I've heard that so many times. I can't do anything with them, let the county take care of them. Which means I'm not, you know, a lot of other people are now taken care of when what they used to call civil society was the family unit, so.
I apologize, I didn't realize Supervisor Wilson had another question. I also want, if Michelle wants to weigh in, I didn't mean to omit DHHS, but I wanted to see if there was an appetite from this board before we pulled in all, everyone, so.
Absolutely. DHHS is a huge partner with us on, on all of this, so thank you.
And then, can I allow Supervisor Wilson, though, to ask his next question? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Where I was going was if there was a process for this, and you mentioned some, some of the stakeholders that would be a part of that, what about the Human Rights Commission? What about our homeless advocacy groups and others who have, you know, really are in these spaces and, and have a, have some legitimate concerns? Where's your, how do you feel about that?
Absolutely. You know, I feel like education and input on advocacy groups and, and buy-in from the community on this ordinance and how, how we're treating people out there and how we're addressing some of these needs. Again, I think people would be surprised. The county's MIST program is outstanding. I can't say enough about how DHHS has partnered with several law enforcement agencies, including the sheriff's office, and doing outstanding outreach for people and providing opportunities. And, you know, I don't want to underscore what Michelle said in her personal story about her, her mother, because we hear this a lot, you know, that the people are making a decision on their own and that kind of stuff. But you know, if you're the family member that's at home anguishing over your loved one that's living out in the community, that's drug addicted, mentally ill, whatever it may be, the reason why they're out there, you know, the community struggles and our family struggles with that. And we, they ask us, please do something. And MIST sees us, they have those personal contacts as well. And so I just think the humanity side of things, I know we advocate for, you know, maybe different, different accountability or whatnot, but, you know, for the person that is stuck in these conditions, I, I want to see better for them. And, and that's what the goal of MIST is, so.
One last thing, when we talk about, you know, the family units, it is part of this, but I will say that when the family units are very stressed about the cost of living in the, especially in relation to rent and especially in relation to healthcare, where we're, you know, it's the number one cause of, you know, medical bankruptcy is like, you know, on the rise and, and those things are big stressors in what we, we can hark back to these, these sort of constructs around our families, which I think are really important. But then we have to also understand the react, the current reality of, of those situations. It's just very different than it was when, you know, some time ago. And I think we're going to have to, we can't, as a county by ourselves, fix those things.
Right.
And we'll, we'll try, but you know, we'll do our best and we'll advocate for, you know, better solutions and resources and those things to do that. But I fundamentally understand why people are concerned about, you know, the, the question of where does someone go? And I think that that's, that's not a bad question. I mean, I think it's the appropriate question to ask in this, in this discussion with that. And of course, as you, we all, as we all know, there's another piece to this, which is the, everyone else in society also trying to navigate through this. And then we have these public spaces that are for the public and they need to be safe and, and available to families and the, and the, and the folks that need to, you know, have to be able to use them to make everything else work as well. So I, I don't have really much more comment on this and I just, I'm not enthusiastic about this conversation and I'm not enthusiastic about prioritizing an ordinance like this, but I'm not afraid of having these conversations as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. I wanted to give Michelle an opportunity, but I do want to just say one thing. And the reason I read what I read earlier is because in the, something that I was saying, if there is a place for them, that was a very key word, that you don't, that can be put into the ordinance. And I'm going to tell you, I appreciate the public comment. However, my mom, I had places for her many times. She refused to go because she didn't have to leave. She could have came and stayed with me. She didn't want to. She chose under the bridge and nobody told her she had to leave there. If she had been told even one time that she had to leave, then maybe she would have taken another option that was handed to her or given to her, but she didn't. And I don't want ever to do heavy handedness, but it is a tool. And if there are places, because the one, number one is where do they go? We don't want to move them. But if there are options, then it is our responsibility as well to help them get those options that are going to make their living conditions better. I'm sorry that I didn't have you on there. I wanted to see what the appetite with the board was. You hear it, but I would like to give you an opportunity.
I'm sure Connie wishes she could be here if she was listening. And I would just say that she, yes, would love to be part of this conversation. And she's asked staff to prepare an annual report to you all, a presentation on housing and homelessness. And in that, it might be good for you all, if you're interested in pursuing an ordinance, to hear more about kind of what the changes have been in the landscape, what might be coming in your consideration of an ordinance, so. Good for that.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
I was actually going to ask for DHHS input. So, yeah, I mean, I guess I, I think it could be helpful to hear a little bit more from your perspective on what you think, whether you think this is a tool that, based on, I mean, I know we're painting with a broad brush and every situation is unique, but, you know, is this, is it difficult to convince folks to take advantage of services that are available? And would this be something that you think could, you know, tip the skills for folks to, to make a difference?
That's a tough question. I do agree that it is a tool in a toolbox. We often talk about how enforcement is a challenge when we make ordinances, right? How are we going to enforce it? How are people going to follow it? So that can be challenging and if we don't have places for people to go, it has to be coupled with that, in my opinion. We do have staff that are all over this county and your districts going out and doing outreach in places where people who are homeless and houseless are staying and offering services, helping them get their driver's license, because they don't have a driver's license or ID to get them to wherever or to get a job or a home or whatever. And there are folks that engage in And there are folks that engage in those services, and there are folks that don't, and I think that there are reasons for that, lots of complicated reasons for that. And so an ordinance may change things for some folks, and it's not going to change things for other folks. We in DHHS would be very interested in providing input on any such ordinance, because we have a perspective, right, that's, that's a little different than, just something to offer, something to add.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, thanks, Michelle, appreciate that. Yeah, your staff are all over the place, doing everything they can, I think we all know that. You know, I often hear that there's always beds available at the mission. They've got 200 beds, and they're almost never full. I remember, it wasn't that long ago, that a woman, the weather was so bad, she was up towards Pearson area, Pearson Building Center, and she didn't have money for a bus, and she slept the night in a dumpster and got crushed when the garbage pickup service came. She couldn't get to the mission. I would say probably half or more of the people that are living in the woods have dogs. You can't go into the mission if you have a dog. So as Michelle said, there are a lot of reasons why people don't take advantage of beds. I also think it's really kind of ironic that there is always a bed at the jail, you know, so to speak. I mean, there was a time where we were overwhelmed at the jail, but now there's room at the jail. And we as a society provide enough money, if you end up at the very end of the rope, and you violated some laws or whatever, and you end up in jail, there's always room for you there, but we don't have the money to provide the services and the opportunities to treat the various people that have different, like, there's no place to go if you have a dog, like I said, you know? Could there be, you know, a place where if you have dogs, you're allowed to come there, right? I mean, it's interesting to me how we always fund the very dead end of things, but we're not funding the stuff up ahead of that. And that's really us as a society, and our priorities, of putting the money in prevention and upfront, rather than the very end of it, and I'm not, in no way do I want to disparage our correctional officers or anything else, because it's not about that.
No.
I will say, my comments about Yee-Haw were incorrect, and it has cost the county. Probably, if you added it all up, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars over 25 years. But if you create a sanctioned camp with full-time, 24-hour, 7 management, you're spending a half million dollars a year. You know, that's 10, 20 million dollars we would have spent on housing those 40 people. So, I think what I was trying to say was that while there are many problems with, with Yee-Haw that we all know about, it did provide housing for people. It wasn't perfect, it had lots of issues, but there was never a medical outbreak there, even though the potential was always there. I think the potential gets even higher when you congregate people. One thing about when they're all living out in the woods, why there's a lot of hazards, they're not congregated as much, where they can spread disease and things like that. We bring them all together and congregate them, that risk goes up tremendously, and we've seen that. So I just wish we as a society would prioritize things a lot differently, I think, like some of the callers we talked about. I will say, the one church in McKinneyville, Joyful Healer, they're amazing. They do amazing work, and take a lot of heat from it, from that community. Thanks to DHHS, there's one toilet there that is the only toilet that many of these people can use, otherwise they're defecating in the woods, or wherever they happen to be that night, in a storefront, under a shelter, or wherever it might be, but, but thanks to DHHS funding, and Joyful Healer's willingness, they have a toilet there. It's the only one in all of McKinneyville that's a public toilet, basically, to be able to utilize. But Joyful Healer catches a ton of flak for it, and they don't get a lot of donations for it. There are people that come, you know, the God Squad, the different people that bring lunches, and this and that. Once a week, they do a program. Aha would bring the trailer, once a week, or every, you know, twice a month, or whatever, for showers. So it's just, you know, and I get people that call me, go, you know, you need to do something about that damn toilet. I got to walk by there with my children every day, and see that mess, you know, whatever. And I said, well, you know, it's actually an opportunity for you to educate your children about how lucky they are, that they have parents, they have a home, they have these things. So, again, I don't have the solutions. I mean, I have no problem with having a discussion about what an ordinance might look like, I would value DHHS's input in a major way. I have said this many times, that I think dumping should be free. You know, I think if we had free dumping, it would solve a lot of our illegal dumping problems, which frankly costs us a hell of a lot more than the revenue we receive from charging for dumping. But only one county in the state does that, Kern County, you know, and it's certainly not the budget time to try and bring a proposal together like that, but that was an issue that's been brought up, about all the dumping all over, and it's getting worse. I think we all know that, Tom can tell us that, and others. So again, I think my highest priority would be, we figure out how as a society to have ordinances, and systems, and support services that bring the resources upfront, and start doing better at providing those opportunities. You know, McKinneyville, thanks to this board, we just approved the Town Center Ordinance, that's going to create potentially over 20 years, 2,500 new housing opportunities, that will probably be apartments and condos, which are a lot more affordable than a single-family home. So that's a piece in the right direction, right? 6,000 more people potentially, that will also create a lot of jobs with retail, economic development, and other kinds of things. Those are all pieces to the puzzle, but it's just always amazed me how we'll spend all the money on the end part, the jail part, but we won't spend it upfront. And there's something wrong with that set of priorities.
Sheriff Ponsel?
I just want to also just remind everyone, too, that we have a new navigation center that's going to be built, you know? And, you know, this is an opportunity that we can use to, you know, steer people towards that navigation center, and, you know, to have the conversation, and to provide these, you know, the people that are, you know, in, struggling to have, you know, to go and get plugged into one of the many programs that may be offered there.
Thank you. I also want to add that there's no way I would have ever left DHHS out of this conversation. And I hope that you folks know that. I just wanted to see what the board's direction would be. It's not a priority for anybody, I, it's a priority for me, it's a priority for my district, to have solutions and tools, but we've heard from this board, so I appreciate Tom, and Sheriff Ponsel, and Michelle, and so there is no action from this motion today, or from this discussion. Thank you.
Some are really confused here. So we've got, two of our large departments says this would be a tool they could use. DHHS says they want to work with it, and we're not going to take an action for what reason exactly? I just heard everybody said they had an appetite for this discussion, to look for something. And, and again, I, I would love to see it move forward, if it's something that our sheriff, our Public Works Director, and our DHHS could use, but if we're not going to do that, then...
Michelle would like to comment.
Just to clarify, I, my comment is, if your board decides that you want to pursue an ordinance, we would like to be part of that. I'm not necessarily saying one way or the other.
I didn't say you were advocating. I said you would work with the sheriff and Public Works. Sheriff and Public Works like the idea, and, you know, I mean, I don't know if we should build the dog kiddles before we build the jail, I don't know anything about the end results and stuff, I just know we have issues. And I personally spend probably 60 to 80 hours a year on homeless issues alone, out at the McKay Track, around Redwood Fields. Just, just last week, I had one of them, they left the lock off the dumpster, and they took everything out of the dumpster to go through it, that's a big dumpster, and then left it. So I get six phone calls, saying there's trash all over the parking lot, because they went through it, the crows have spread it, and everything else. I, that's, that's a rare occasion, but sheriff has been out there where people have dumped full, pick up loads of trash, and we've gone through it and found multiple envelopes, and actually been able to go back and say, come get your stuff. So with that being said, I appreciate everything the sheriff's doing, I appreciate what Tom's been doing, and everything else, but Public Works does not do waste management. I, and in this conversation, I really have to thank Frank, and especially Linda, for the years of, you made a phone call, and she was able to come pick up stuff for me, throughout the county, through Recology, and they're a great partner in things like that. But if we're not going to have a conversation about fixing the front end or anything else, this is, this is an actuality in your face, in the middle end, that we've got to address. And we've been talking about homelessness, and housing, and everything else, for 12, 14, 20 years, and everything else, and I know family values have changed, and everything else. We're not making headway, guys, and if we decide we don't want to do this, because it might be uncomfortable, or it might upset somebody, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. If we're not going to do anything about this, then I want this hour and 20 minutes back in my life.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to form a committee, as was suggested, that would include Public Works Director Mattson, and the sheriff, and appropriate staff from DHHS, to put together a compassionate assistance ordinance, I want to call it. Because I heard you talking about that a lot, Billy, you know, and I know you guys really, you do do your best. And I know there's been really good partnerships between you and DHHS, to try and bring as many street outreach workers into this, into the system as possible, as an approach. And I know for you guys, the last thing you want to do is arrest somebody and throw them into the jail, I know you want to help them. So, from that perspective, I'm putting this motion forward, because I think getting that committee together with two board members, which I would, in my motion, include Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bone, if they're willing to serve, to work with that committee, and see what you can come up with, that, that works towards this compassionate assistance approach. Which we've had many programs, funding's tough, I look forward to the report that you guys are going to bring forward, to kind of get us up to speed with where we've been, where we're at, where we're going, because I think that would be incredibly informative for this, this board. But I, I do value the conversation, and I think we, if we put our heads together, can probably figure out ways to make this a tool that could be of value, not one that's punitive, that just looks to throw people in jail, and I know that's not what you're talking about. And I just very much appreciate Supervisor Bushnell for bringing it forward. I think that conversation would be a good one, so I'm willing to support that with that motion.
I would like to second the CAO ordinance.
Yes. Of course, having them involved as well, if that's what I heard you as an amendment to the motion.
Can you help me understand whether camping on county property would be a part, preventing camping on county property would be a part of that?
It would be...
Is that the intent?
Yes, it would be the intent for that to be included in the discussion about, what do we do about camping on county property? Can we do an analysis of surplus property and figure out where people could be, or not be? If there's no other, you know, I mean, yeah, the details are in there, but yes, I would say that as a tool, that's important, but as you said, and as others have said, we've experimented with that, it hasn't been all that successful. Eureka, as an example. So, I'm not wild-eyed enough to think that we're going to solve this thing really quickly and easily, to figure out how exactly we do all this, but I don't have a problem, as Supervisor Wilson said, I'm not afraid of the conversation. You know, I think that there's willingness to try and figure out, are there things we can do that will work better than what we're doing right now? And that's certainly a piece of that puzzle.
Can I comment?
Yes, please.
I, I'm, as it's phrased right now, I'm not supportive of that, because we have a lot of irons in the fire with the navigation center, that we need to see through to completion. We have other tools in the toolbox, as we've discussed, and frankly, I, I don't know that this particular approach is the, what I think is the best use of our staff's time. Since everyone has referenced it, I will say, I'm also not afraid to have this conversation. It's about what I think is a good use of time and resources, and to achieve a goal. I do believe that for many of the instances where someone is engaging in threatening or aggressive behavior, there are other options. And I certainly want folks to feel that they can go to our public spaces, so if there's the desire to bring back something that's specific to county parks, or specific locations where there is an acute issue, I'm open to that, but I, I would want it to just be really targeted, and I don't feel that a task force to work on that right now is the, is the thing that I want to spend our resources on.
Supervisor Madron, can you restate your motion, please?
Yeah, the motion is to direct staff to form this committee, as suggested, that would include Public Works Director, or an appointee, sheriff and an appointee, DHHS, the CAO, and two ad hoc members from this board, Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bone, to come together and figure out, is there a way to develop a compassionate assistance ordinance? That's a really broad thing, but I just, I state that as the title of it, just simply because I think that's what we're all hoping to try and do. But there's a lot to figure out there, and I appreciate what Supervisor Arroyo says about limited resources and stuff, but there seems to be a willingness to try and work together to figure out if there are things we can do, so that's really what I'm supporting. Was that clear, as a motion? Okay, thank you.
It was, and I'll agree with that, and I just, as the second, and I appreciate the financial concerns of, of, of spending the money, I don't think it will be that much, considering it's our largest issue, and the amount of money we spend on other things that do not seem to be happening, but we're still spending on them, so I just, I don't think that's the extreme issue. The extreme issue is getting this problem at least addressed, or maybe seeming like we got dressed. I mean, people are so frustrated, and it's so funny, people aren't frustrated until it gets on their doorstep, and it's getting on their doorstep, because it's spreading out, and it's going out, and it scares me about the county property thing, because now we move them on to private property. But I am in no favor of, we can look at surrounding counties that have tried to do day use areas, or parking lot areas, and Arcata House tried one, it didn't work out, everybody's tried one, they're just expensive. As Supervisor Madron stated, they are expensive, but cheap, unpermitted, unzoned properties are a lot cheaper, so I don't know what we do.
Michelle wanted to weigh in.
I was just going to say, and I don't know that I need to say this, the CAO reference, I believe Supervisor Bone was just the compassionate access, compassionate assistance ordinance, I don't know that you wanted the CAO on it, Supervisor Bone, I don't know, anyway.
I was just using the acronym.
The point I'm trying to make is that I'm not supporting a banning of overnight camping ordinance. I'm supporting a compassionate assistance discussion and possible ordinance that really tries to look at, what are the tools we need to try and help people? And I, you know, banning overnight camping has been the suggested piece to that, but that's not what my focus is in this motion, my focus is, we've got some bright people here, and with the update report from DHHS, that's going to give us a clue on where we're at, where we're heading, which is not a great place, frankly, with what's going on federally, frankly. But I do think that there could be some really deep discussions that could be brought back to this board, about what you all think might be some solutions. One of them was brought forward today as a banning of camping, as a tool. You two have said you think that's a good one, but I think getting the whole team together would be a way for us to at least further the conversation, and do the best we can to figure out how to move from where we're at to someplace better. I don't know how we do that, but I trust you guys to put some good thought into it.
Supervisor Wilson?
I will be reluctantly supporting this motion, but I really do want to emphasize my concerns around what Supervisor Arroyo says, in terms of, we have a lot of stuff on the plate here, and so I want to make sure that these discussions that you guys are having are effective, but also not getting in the way of, we already have prioritized lists of ordinances, and things we're trying to get done through the general plan, and other things, you know, there's just other stuff. And all of which is, we could have another meeting about each one of those things, again, here today, but, so I just want to say, like, I think it's, it is important, and I do want to emphasize that what Supervisor Bushnell was saying around, around what it, you know, what is that contact that actually gets people motivated to take the actions to, to move forward, it is really important, and like I said, sometimes that works out really well, sometimes it's sort of a neutral things, and sometimes it is, it is really negative. And, and I think, depending on our perspectives... And, and I think depending on our perspectives, we focus on one of those things. And I'm, I'm just hoping that we're really emphasizing the, the need to, where we can, move people upward in their, in their wellbeing as, as best we can. So I'm, I'm confident that you guys have that in your, in your, what you want to do. And so I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Kaylee.
Thank you. Supervisor Royo? No. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you, guys. We are going to take a lunch break from now until 1:00 PM, and we'll be back on, for time sets, at 1:00 PM, starting with closed session. We're in recess.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. It is the intent of the Board of Supervisors to meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators. In addition, the Board of Supervisors will meet regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and E3 regarding exposure to one, to litigation in one potential case. And finally, the Board will meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to discuss existing litigation in the case of Citizens Protecting Humboldt Bay versus the County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201594.
Thank you. I will be recusing from one item in closed session, and will be attending the two other items. And how long do you think?
I would say probably, we should be back pretty close to the time set for 1:30.
Okay, we're in recess.
I have public comment.
I'm sorry, we have public comment.
Thank you.
On Zoom.
Yeah. Caller 7718, I will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes.
So my understanding on the Citizens Protecting Humboldt Bay there, I think that's, I've been talking about litigation, quite a lot here, objections to the intake and the perception that Harvard District wanted to take over the same permits that were permitted on that intake, which endangered long-term smell and a bunch of other things. If the county is involved in this, I would recommend they consider going to an intake from the ocean rather than keep an easy one in the bay, because it doesn't have the same impacts, as far as I can tell. On your other topic there, I, and I'm not sure if you don't think I have very much knowledge in the legal world, but I feel I do, through other people that I associate with and talk to on these topics. One of the last things you want to do is put your words before your court. The item there where you have the anticipated litigation, I would consider having a, well, when you come out of the report, you've decided to go ahead and table two of your other items that you have scheduled for this afternoon, because if you don't get the foundation set up for what's happening there through the legal process, you will be nothing but setting yourself up for a major lawsuit, an illegal lawsuit determined by law. Your actions later in the day could cause that lawsuit to be, and that would compound and exacerbate your chance to resolve litigation. But that's just my, my non-legal opinion on that topic. We have an estimated time as far as when we would be back from closed session. That's my last question. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Chair.
Okay, public comment in the room?
Hello. My name is Johanna Redoni, and I'm here to speak on, I'm not sure which one it is, the censure item.
So the censure item is at 1:30. You could speak on litigation, Bushnell, second item in closed session.
All right. I guess that's what I'm speaking on then. So Supervisor Bushnell is a person of integrity, honesty, and passion. She does her job well, which is to advocate and represent her constituents. She's a can-do supervisor. Removing her from leadership roles by censure would be an injustice to the people that she represents. I've personally witnessed her dedication to and time spent in service. She is the epitome of a public servant. She admittedly made a mistake. She owns it and is apologetic. Please don't let this incident result in removing Supervisor Bushnell as a powerful and influential representative for Humboldt County at the local, state, and national level. I believe Supervisor Bushnell's sincerity and pledging to do better going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, closed public comment, and we'll be in Conference Room A. Report out from closed session?
We haven't finalized closed session yet. We'll report out at the end of the day.
Okay. The next item I'm gonna, is gonna be brought to us by Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Hold on a second, just bringing it up online here, so I get it correct. All right, so the first item we have before us today at 3:30 is for the sustained finding of violation of the Board of Supervisors' Code of Conduct. CEO, introduce.
Zach O'Hannon with Human Resources will present on this item.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, Board members. Zach O'Hannon, Director of Human Resources. I am going to keep my piece of this presentation very brief. As you all know, in the staff report, there were findings under the Board of Supervisors' Code of Conduct. You have those attached to the report. And with that, per the Code of Conduct, you're here to discuss that item, and I can be available for any questions.
All right, then. Here we are to discuss this item. All right, so I guess I could read the discussion.
Point of order, could you, could you just say what was handed to you, just so, because so we can be very transparent?
The staff report. Sorry, a printed version versus what I have here. It's just a printed version of the staff report. Yep, nothing, 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 just, which is what I was just about to read, so that we can just get this out, get it all out there, so it's all there. Okay. Let's see. At April 4th, 2022 Board of Supervisors' Meeting, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors approved amendments, excuse me, to the, our Code of Conduct. Was the approved amendments to the Code of Conduct included the creation of a committee comprised of the CAO, the Director of Human Resources, and County Council to determine if the formal investigation should be initiated upon a complaint of a violation of the Board of Supervisors' of Conduct, but Code of Conduct. On May 6th and May 7th of 2025, the Director of Human Resources received two separate complaints alleging violations of the Board of Supervisors' Code of Conduct by Second District Supervisor Michelle Bushnell. As required by the Board of Supervisors' Code of Conduct Committee, the committee met and reviewed the complaint, determined by two-thirds vote that an impartial third-party investigation should be conducted. The Director of Human Resources subsequently initiated an investigation through Kramer Workplace Investigations. Attached to this report is an executive summary outlining sustained findings from that investigation. Per the Board of Supervisors' Code of Conduct, a sustained violation of the Code of Conduct and methods by the board member will be, will be agendized for open session consideration, which will include notifying the board member subject to the allegation of the allegations and providing the board member an opportunity to present information. Following completion of the investigation process resulting in sustained allegations against a board member, board action is limited to public censure. So just so everyone understands, this item that we're talking about right now is limited to public censure. This is what we're, there is another item we'll be talking about after this, but right now, we're just talking about public censure. And such action shall require the affirmation of a vote of at least two-thirds of the board of, of the board members present and voting. So that means four-fifths of this board. This agenda item serves to meet the requirements outlined above and to initiate open discussion with Board of Supervisors. And that is where we're at right now. I will say that there is a report, and there, and there are at least five witnesses in this, in the, from, in this report. Is that correct? Is it six?
I believe six is what was indicated.
Okay. Great. I think what I want to do is, I just want to get through the censure part of this, because part of what we're going to discuss next is also the process a little bit. So I just want to make sure that we are doing, doing our, we're completing our process here right now, but I want to make sure that if we're going to comment or discuss the process that we're going to, I'm going to ask that people make those comments in the next part, because that's really where we're going to talk about, you know, that a little bit in terms of the, you know, that item. So in this case, this is purely about the censure. I'm going to open it up to public comment, and then we'll just kind of move on from there. So right now, I'm going to open up to public comment, and so I'll look over to our Zoom. And how many hands do we have up currently?
Currently, one.
All right. Let's hear the public comment from, and give them three minutes.
Thank you. Caller 7718, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, I'm speaking explicitly on the censure here at this time. I think it's important for everybody to have, I guess it's his punishment, and you have to look at what the actual outcome was and what affected that. So I first would be apt to make your offer, are we? How many people that were involved or witnesses have resigned their positions? How many of them have asked to be transferred to some other position? How many have initiated restraining order, which of course happened in Arcata regarding a council member there? And so you, you really look at how much negativity this brought into the situation, and it's there, and it's admitted, it's there. You know, I, I looked at another case, you know, and I brought it up before, and I'm going to mention it maybe this time, I have to do it at the end here, but, you know, someone goes banging on the auto controller door, basically intimidating, allows him control the F-bomb, and leaves slamming the door, and then engages in hostile actions down in your facility down below by blocking someone's car. Now, a whole bunch of people, in my understanding, direct communication with people who did resign, their child, resigned their positions because they were uncomfortable having to work in that kind of a situation. So something like that would be, of course, it was no physical violence, I believe, no threat of violence under the circumstances before you regarding censorship. I'm really not sure that this raises to the level of censorship. I do believe in equity. I understand you and the other thing. I'm not going to mention that, just maybe, but I will hold that. But my understanding is nothing's happened there. And I'm speaking to the people in the department, who should have been notified since they were quitting and they were intimidated to leave the county as far as employees go. So what level does this rise to as far as a spectrum of things? And of course, that, of course, you're the same. Personally, I, I, censorship may be the way to go with this, and the other things I will talk about later, and see whether that would rise to anywhere near that level. So big enough, my opportunity to communicate and comment on this very important issue before you know it. And always look, always look at, you know, how would you feel and how do you think you'd be treated walking the other person's shoes, because someday you may be in those shoes, and everybody should be treated the same in my opinion. So I, I think it does, it does not really bode well on the county as far as reputation goes when these things happen. But if necessary, I'm sure you'll do what you're going to do. Thank you. My name is Speaker.
Is there any other hands up?
Thank you. There is one more.
All right. And if you're watching online, you know, after this hand, if there's not another hand up, we're going to move to the room, and we're not going to go back, so.
Okay, caller 8496, I will unmute you, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Laura Lassiter, Director of Operations for the Southern Humboldt Business and Visitor Bureau. I've had the opportunity to work closely with Supervisor Bushnell over the past 10 years on a wide range of projects throughout Southern Humboldt. This is a passionate and pivotal time for our community, and Supervisor Bushnell has consistently demonstrated deep commitment to representing and advocating for her constituents. Over the years, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but we've been able to navigate through many passionate conversations about our community and economy. I've witnessed her dedication firsthand, her willingness to listen, and her drive to find solutions that serve the people of her district. Supervisor Bushnell is vital to Southern Humboldt and to all of her constituents within her district. I believe that continuing to work together, we can move forward in unity during this challenging economic time. Her representation and understanding of our local needs remain essential to our progress and resilience of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any more hands up before we move on?
No, there's not.
Okay, we're going to move on. All right, so again, speaking to just the censure, and so if there's anyone that has comments in the room about the censure that we're talking about right now. Three minutes.
Good afternoon, Craig Johnson. Trying to bring myself up to speed and follow everything that's happening, so forgive me if I don't speak on the exact topic specifically the way you're asking. But in general, I want to echo what Laura Lassiter had said. And me personally, what I look for in leadership is exactly what Supervisor Bushnell displays on every facet of the job. I feel I look for someone that's going to be passionate for their constituents, like she is, time and time again. I've never seen someone debate like she does from the diocese. And I look for hearing her voice into the future to support her community like she does. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mulder here. Talking about the censorship, first point of order, you do have a time certain item that was set for 1:30. These chambers weren't open, so unfortunately, if someone came through and tried to enter the chambers, they were turned away. They may have missed their opportunity to speak. I do believe my interpretation of the Brown Act's different than everyone's, but I went through a lot of trainings, and my interpretation, those chambers should have been open, and if those chambers were not open, there should have been a note on the door. So that way, somebody didn't lose their right to come before you and speak, and that's really unfortunate. Everyone's interpretation, I knocked on county council's door, they didn't seem too interested in what I had to say. You know, I look like a homeless person, maybe. So I like having that look. I like looking like a poor person. We've been overtaxed, so. These comments I have have nothing to do with my appointment. Anyone close to me, as well as Michelle knows, my time at where I'm appointed is very limited. My family's more important to me, and you will know a date here soon. But as far as the censorship, I don't know exactly how to speak on it, exactly the details, because it's really confusing what the actions were. I see there's the same findings censor, like you don't want her to comment anymore in public or in the board, or are you guys going to throw something at her that she can't talk anymore, she has to raise her hand to speak? I don't know, because that's at the board. I really look forward to talking on the next item. Unfortunately, the time certain matter didn't come before time certain, so truck drivers sometimes got to get down the road at a certain time. She fights for the Second District, I'll say that. I've served on boards with her. She gets passionate. I don't know the actual allegations that happened. I, you know, I heard the F-bomb, and door was slammed, is what I read. I, you know, I heard the F-bomb and door was slammed is what I read and nothing more. I don't know where it happened. I don't know if it happened in here, one of the department places, so as a member of the public, it's kind of hard to know. And I do understand we have to protect employee rights. I can say that different members of this board have said different things to me as a member of the public, so I don't know if I'm offended by something that was said to me or comments that were made at me or, you know, do I have a process that I can file a complaint and say, hey, I feel my rights were violated as a member of the public that came before you and spoke my First Amendment right? I I don't know because I don't have access to that. So I just want you to think, I don't believe anyone up here is perfect. I believe we're all human. And look at what really took place and don't make this political. And I'm really appreciative it has to be a four fifths vote because I believe the next item's a majority vote and I feel that's unconstitutional. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that has anything to say about the censure item? Okay, well, moving on, just a couple of things. First, your the comment that the public doesn't know very much is true and as mentioned, it's by design. This is something having to do with employees here in the county and they need to be protected in in those processes. Whenever we have these, this this is an odd process we're in right now because it's very it's very public for the most part. These are done behind closed doors. We don't have public processes for for disciplinary actions for other employees. We're the we're the ones that are different in that way. And so one can imagine why we would want to protect employees anonymity in these processes. As you can imagine, it's it's because sometimes we are in a political landscape and so that can bleed and over into other people's lives and we have to be protective of that. This is not about Supervisor Bushnell's performance as a supervisor in her community. That's this is not what this is about, good or bad, that we're not here to to analyze that. We're we are here to address a specific incident that occurred in the context of of Supervisor Bushnell's time in the workplace. And so that's that's really what we're here to review and 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 make action on. So if there's any other supervisor that has anything to say, let's start with Supervisor Bone.
Well, yeah, I I don't think, and maybe I'm wrong and I don't want to question the public, but what does the censor constitute? I don't I don't I think we're I don't know if they understand the punishment or the findings we come down with on a public censure. I mean, I'm so what would a censure entail?
That's a very good question. I'm going to leave it.
I can speak to that. It's essentially a public reprimand saying that your board does not agree with the incident that occurred. It does not quell Supervisor Bushnell's ability to speak in the future or today. It just relates to the matter at hand and your board demonstrating that that it's a behavior you're not supportive of.
Yes, please, Supervisor.
I I do just want to clarify that censor and censure are different, have different meanings. I I hope that was clear, but yeah, that I think in the past, this has also been a point of confusion about whether this was censorship limiting speech or censure, which is saying we don't approve of a behavior. So collectively deciding today whether we would like to say that.
Thank you for that clarification. Supervisor Madron, do you have anything to say before we?
Well, I appreciated Supervisor Bushnell's comments that she made online. I know she's owning what happened and working on stuff. I really want to hear what Supervisor Bushnell has to say.
All right. Well, did you want to say something in this process? All right, here we are.
First of all, I am regretful that the incident that happened the morning, I believe, was of the fifth. It made everybody very uncomfortable. I was very loud. I felt wronged and I reacted bad. I also make made staff very uncomfortable and nobody should have to feel that way in their workplace. Also, I have no issues with the employees in question. They're great employees and do their job. I did apologize, but it was an uncomfortable situation. There are things in my life I have worked hard to overcome. Not making excuses at all, but I have a fight or flight personality sometimes. It comes from past traumas of a very abusive relationship and I work really hard and I've been in counseling for it for a lot of years. And I sometimes get heated when I feel wronged. And in no way, though, should I ever make an employee feel uncomfortable in their work. I also like the two hurt people in question very much. And I'm very regretful, have been since the day of incident. Whatever this board chooses, I will respect and move forward. It also has not been comfortable the last few weeks for anyone and I recognize that as well. I also not making excuses and taking action for my responsibilities, but I was very sick for the year prior leading up to this. Was very hard for me to make it through a day and I had surgery four weeks after this incident and I'm in a much better space. Once again, not excusing what I did. I do not have the right to raise my voice, slam a door, or cuss. And it's something I work on continually and will continue to work on. And whatever this board chooses to do, I understand that that's the process. Again, to the employees, I am regretful and wish I would have handled it different.
Thank you. Oh, of course. The last thing is, and I don't know if I said this already, I was very loud. I was in an office. There were a lot of people there. That's also not okay to make other people feel uncomfortable in a space that when they didn't even have anything to do with it, that's uncomfortable for other people. And I I don't like that either, a part of what happened. I just needed to add that.
Well, thank you. I'd be interested in not belaboring this, so I'm ready, ready to make a motion. I do just have a couple of comments. You know, it's part of our job to ensure that employees work in a positive environment aligned with the, you know, the standards of the day and those standards change over time. So I, you know, I imagine some people might feel that behavior was warranted and in the County of Humboldt, you know, that the expectations are that 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 behavior is is not acceptable and that we also want employees to feel free to come forward with their concerns without feeling like there's a chilling effect. So I will agree that with Supervisor Wilson, that it's not about whether Supervisor Bushnell is a hard worker or a solid rep for her district or a good person. It's about whether the behavior was inappropriate and I think it would be hard to say that it wasn't. So I will go ahead and move the item regarding censure forward. Thank you.
Is there a second? Great. Okay, so I have just a couple of comments and I do want to, I do appreciate Supervisor Bushnell's heartfelt response to this, but I I do have to say, and I will say, it's like, you know, he who has no sins casts the first stone or whatever that saying is, but understanding that we're all humans is and we have, we have our, we have our our issues for sure. But a couple of the terms that were used here was, you know, regretful. I I don't know, I mean, for me, there's things I regret, there's things I'm really sorry about, there's, you know, and and that for me, being regretful is something that, and maybe, maybe we're not talking in the same way, is sort of an internal space versus, you know, being really sorry about what, you know, you've done is is something about that. And then the word uncomfortable. I want to say that that when people and when we as people in power are doing or behaving in this way, it actually is often perceived as threatening. It's not just uncomfortable. People are concerned about their job, about their livelihoods. They're concerned about their place in the community. So when we are in people who, when we're people in power in those spaces, it's we're not equal in peers in these situations. So when we behave in this way, it scares people. It's and 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 it's 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 not just a chilling effect in a in a working environment. It it it's can be, I dare say, sometimes sort of traumatizing and maybe not even sort of, maybe actually. And and so I don't want to, I don't want to belittle the what has occurred because it's not the only time this has occurred. And we have to also understand that employees don't want to bring these these things forwards because they're concerned about the, you know, their their livelihood and their space and and their safety, quite frankly. And if it's not just the safety within the within the actual workplace, I mean, just, you know, look at some of the online, you know, behaviors that people have and and people can see that. And so, you know, so I, for me, I think it is a more serious thing than just being regretful or or the words like uncomfortable. I think it 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 is more than that. And and again, and I know, I know Supervisor Bushnell has has really put it out there and like, you know, that but she is not the victim in this, okay? I mean, that is, that's something I think that we're forgetting in this conversation. So with that, I'm ready to take a vote unless there's anyone else who needs to say anything.
do I think there should have been, should be and should be consequences, yes. For the employees, yes. I I am finding out, I mean, just right now, the analyzation of somebody's apology, we don't know their level of breaking things apart. I believe that they probably meant all those words and everything else, but but you did, both of you did hit the point. We're here to protect our employees and to respect our employees and let them know that we are here for them. Was this an off-case incident? But I also think it's a, you know, apologies aside, self-analizations of the apology, everything that goes with that. At the end of the day, I hope this is a teaching moment and we move forward from here. This is a very passionate job, but the people we look towards supporting us in this job are very, very important and we need to support them
I think we're ready for the vote.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell? Supervisor Bone? Motion carries 4-1, 0-1.
And with that, I'll hand it back to Supervisor Bushnell.
So the next item is brought by Supervisor Madron. Consider additional mitigation actions to address Supervisor Supervisor Bushnell's conduct. So I'm going to hand it to Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm just going to read into the record the staff report discussion, which is often the way we have staff kind of introduce the topic. And for those that don't have the staff report, this will be a way for them to hear that whole item. It's not very long. Following completion of the complaint review and investigation process and in accordance with the Board of Supervisors Code of Conduct and Ethics, the Board of Supervisors prior to this item considered censure against Supervisor Bushnell based on sustained findings demonstrating that she raised her voice, spoken hostile manner, and cursed at employees. Such conduct undermines public trust, compromises the effective functioning of county government, and violates county ethical standards and workplace conduct policies. In light of these findings, the Board may consider further actions designed to restore public confidence, ensure a safe and respectful working environment, and uphold the standards of ethical governance expected by and owned and owed to the residents of Humboldt County. The Code of Conduct and Ethics requires Board members to maintain professional conduct, practice civility, refrain from abusive behavior, and support a positive workplace environment. Sustained violations are subject to public censure, which has just been done. Additionally, the county's harassment and abusive conduct policies prohibits conduct that creates a hostile or adverse environment for employees. Pursuant to Board policy and its established authority to manage internal governance, leadership assignments, and committee appointments, the Board may take action to remove the chair assignment and rescind boards, commissions, and ad hoc appointments in order to protect the public interest and to ensure lawful, ethical, and effective operations of county government. In addition, Supervisor Bushnell has raised concerns regarding due process under the Code of Conduct framework. While the Board is confident in and committed to following the policies and procedures currently in place, it recognizes the importance of maintaining public confidence in the process. Accordingly, it is recommended that this matter be referred to the grand jury for independent review and to request evaluation of the Code of Conduct for potential changes or clarifications. It is recommended that two members of the Board of Supervisors be appointed to draft and transmit a formal request to the grand jury.
Public comment first, please. We will start on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Caller 7718, I will unmute you and you'll have three minutes.
Earlier, I spoke on what we fix whatever the punishment should be for this. I think you've been punished sufficiently by the action which was taken, in my opinion. I I think punishment is usually built out to show and and get someone to to seize a certain action. Personally, I do not think that Supervisor Bushnell would do the same action. I would hope not. I think she's learned from this. I do have points except, and I kind of got the feeling that from the diocese, it was that the apology wasn't the verbiage that someone wanted to hear there. People's own words have their own meanings and I think the apology was heartfelt. I think it was appropriate. I think it was sufficient. I think that this will not happen again and that's the ending result we want to have out of the whole process. I strongly suggest that out calling Supervisor is not personally indebted to the process, indebted by the grand jury if they'll take it. I seriously doubt whether they will as long as there's any outside litigation on the topic. I think the process is flawed, as I mentioned before. I had people bring my attention, they say, the people who should be on this committee should just happen again, should be elected people. In other words, they should be somebody that the people put in positions from somewhere in the jury and I think that would be more appropriate than having staff members that are appointed. that are appointed in this process. I think it's a flawed process. I mentioned that on multiple occasions. And I do, do feel that, uh, these other actions, anything like taking away positions on ad hocs or committees, kind of cheers the voters who, who actually are to be represented by Supervisor Bushnell or any of you who are on this. And I think that would be a travesty to have them not have their voices on these different committees. I do not see any reason for the short term here to remove her as chair. I feel that would be more or less politically motivated, in my opinion. Uh, and so I recommend that you take the action of going ahead and forwarding the process to the grand jury for a review, if they're willing to take it. And do not engage in any of the other options that were presented to you. Thank you, Mark. Can you speak?
Thank you. Caller two, six, one, one. I will unmute you and you will have three minutes.
Good afternoon, um, Supervisors. Um, I want to concur with Kent. I believe that this should go to review with the grand jury. I am not supportive of the other recommended actions at this point in time. I feel like this is a very touchy situation that has been brought up for the fact that it's going to now create a ripple effect that the scrutiny upon the rest is going to be taken, not, not more differently than already has, but there's a lot of actions in the past that kind of were just ignored, people moved on, but I think the scrutiny will be there now. I don't think, um, any of you will now be able to move in a way that you're not going to selfishly like on how you're doing it. So this is actually a learning for everybody. And I do feel bad for whoever kind of got breached that. I mean, but sometimes we have to reflect on our own personals, and when a workplace comes around and we have, people have to work together, we all kind of got to grow up. And we may disagree one day, but can we show back up to work the next day respectfully? And that's, that's the main thing. It's like, when we have a bad day today, but what about tomorrow and the next day? And I, I have faith in Michelle that we can definitely have a better day tomorrow. And I have faith in all you guys too, but just saying, because we're going to be watching a lot harder now.
Thank you. That's all on Zoom.
Any public comment in the room?
Craig Johnson, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Um, I don't think any further action should be taken at all. I don't think this is something that should be pushed onto the grand jury. The grand jury, I believe, can only handle, I think it's three items a year. I don't think this warrants it at all. I think enough has been learned from this already. And to pick up on a little bit of what the last caller said, everyone is going to be taking this forward. Everyone that was involved, um, on the board and employees and so forth. So I think, uh, what has been learned has been done, and I don't think any, any more should be done about this. Um, I do want to touch again, though, on a couple things, and that is, um, the role of a supervisor and leadership. And to be able to use their voice and to push for their constituents. Again, I don't know all the details, but I've picked up more here just in this past 30 minutes. And I think it's important for you all to keep bringing your passion. I don't expect anyone to speak in a constant monotone and not have reflection of maybe I was too loud or too soft. I look at the five of you, and I deal with the five of you quite often, and thank God there's five that are so different. Like, that is important. You have a, a woman that was raised in the country, dealing with many men probably around her, and doing the, the jobs that she was doing. And Supervisor Arroyo and her position with the Coast Guard. Like, these are all different things that we have to think about, how these two individuals conduct themselves, and how they move through their day and to, uh, uh, get their point across. And, and granted, you can't always do everything that you might have, and all the tools and toolbox you can't always use, but I think it's important to realize some of these other circumstances that might have brought us to this point. But again, I just want to end it, end it with, I don't think anything more should be done in this case. Let's lay this to rest and let's move on with some county business. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Thomas Mulder. Uh, I just want to bring light, this was a time set at 1:30. I feel that there'd be way more people commenting had it happened at 1:30 and there was a notice out. I do believe that you are in violation of the Brown Act by not having those chambers open, as I've said before. This is my formal complaint that you violated the Brown Act. I don't know your policy if that goes from there or whatever. Everyone's policy is different. So threatening, um, behavior of those in power, that's really amazing to hear. Me as an individual citizen of this county has felt threatened by words said up here. My livelihood has been put on task. Been threatened not because of cannabis, because of many other things in my way of life, liking to be in the woods, liking to be able to teach my child how to run a chainsaw, how to run an axe. I feel that right has been threatened. So please do sign me up for that place to file that complaint. Because those of us in power, if we know that we're speaking from a threatening behavior, yes, my tones are elevated because I'm passionate. I'm speaking from the heart. Let's remember to respect each other. Let's remember to be kind to one another. Let's try to figure out where they're coming from. If you tell me you're sorry in whatever word, I need to respect that. That's not, that's your sorry. And I'm not analyzing because you didn't say this word, this word, and this word. So let's accept people for who they are, and the livelihoods of their backgrounds, and where they're at. I don't think anything else forward, should go forward as far as taking away the chair. January is right around the corner, so Supervisor Wilson, you'll be the chair in no time at all. So, um, the, taking away the committees, that is, I agree with Kent. That's taking away the voters' word, the voters' word and rights. And then hostile, like two things, you know, two paper clips. Found both those on the ground, right there, you know? One, I sat there and opened up, one considered a weapon, one's a paper clip. They're both the same thing. I found them on the ground. You can watch me on video. Um, just, you know, they're the same thing. We're both the people. So let's be mindful of what we say. Let's be respectful of one another, please. Uh, I wish I could sit here and watch this process go through, but I hope one of you makes a motion and says, hey, we think there's been enough that's happened. Let's move on, and let's have a real tight leash if something else happens. This should be a four-fifths vote. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? CNN, I'll close public comment and bring it back to Supervisor Madron.
Thank you, Chair Bushnell. Um, well, I, I do appreciate, as I said earlier, Supervisor Bushnell's owning her actions and making comments about how sorry she is about all that. Uh, I believe that to be very sincere. Uh, I've known her now for, what is it, five years, I guess, we've served together. Um, and Supervisor Bushnell is a strong advocate for her communities. There's no doubt about that. Nobody's questioning that. I will say in regards to being on committees and boards or commissions and boards, whether you're the appointed representative on that commission or board, as board members, we all end up with a say. Yes, we're not necessarily the voting member on that board, but if, if we're trying to say that, um, if you're no longer the appointed member to that board and commission, then the other four members on every commission they're not on somehow don't have a say for their constituents, don't have the ability to really stand up for their issues, et cetera. So I just want to be really clear. I don't think that's true. Uh, it's a really heavy responsibility being appointed to these boards and commissions as a board representative. And as our Code of Conduct states, we're supposed to be looking out for the, um, the interests of the county as a whole, the public interest, above and beyond any constituent's interest. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't consider our constituents' concerns, because we absolutely have to. And I will say, that's probably one of the hardest things about this job, is trying to balance those individual constituent concerns with our public interest duties under our Code of Conduct as, as board members. It is absolutely a difficult juggling act on a regular, regular basis. Uh, but we all do our best to do that. Uh, so this isn't about, uh, the incredible work that Supervisor Bushnell does, because it's been seen by a lot of people. This is about these behaviors that are, that are documented. Um, as the Board discussed in the previous item, an investigation conducted through the county's established complaint process resulted in sustained findings involving Supervisor Bushnell. It isn't a one-and-done thing. A similar incident involving Supervisor Bushnell previously occurred in the fall of 2022, where there was also findings that were brought forward. And in that case, the Board chose not to censure. The Board accepted Supervisor Bushnell's apologies and her commitment to working on those behaviors. And as she's, has said, um, these have come from, you know, experiences in her life. Uh, we all have those. I've had experiences, um, my family have had experiences, and we all have those. And yet, we somehow have to rise above those. So I do appreciate what Supervisor Bushnell has said about taking additional steps to try and work on those things. That's a serious commitment, and I, I appreciate that. But, um, you know, like I said, it's not one-and-done. There was this other incident in '22. Um, also, I have further witnessed similar behaviors towards staff, the public, and community partners at other times. Uh, I didn't file formal complaints, but I did witness those personally. And I am growing, growingly, I am, I have a growing, increasing concern over that pattern of bullying, intimidation, and retaliatory conduct, and abusive treatment of others. And I don't think it's necessarily intentional, but it does happen. Obviously, not all the time. Supervisor Bushnell, um, performs in a very professional way, and yes, very passionate. I can be incredibly passionate myself. I totally appreciate that. Uh, but it isn't one-and-done. I've seen it as kind of an ongoing thing. And so I wish you all the, the best in your efforts. I know we all need that support from family and friends and colleagues to try and work on our stuff. I certainly have stuff. I'm not free and clear of any of that. Um, but these things are really serious, and they do have a really dramatic impact on staff. Um, and the process for staff complaints are very different than a board complaint. Um, things get done a lot quicker. People either get let go or they get shifted to other positions. But at the board, it takes a lot more time, and we do this in the public right here, which makes everybody very uncomfortable, no doubt about it. But these things can affect morale. They affect the public's confidence in the institution, and they impact our ability to conduct business in a respectful and effective manner. I noted online, many comments from people say, oh, just get over it, you know, grow up. Uh, this stuff happens in the workplace. Does that make it okay? No, it absolutely does not make it okay. And we have a, you know, a workplace violence prevention plan. We have our harassment, you know, policies. We have all these things in place because we all deserve to work in a workplace where we're not subject to intimidation and threats and hostile environments. And so that's why those laws have been passed. That's why we have very strong efforts here at the county to try and work on these things in a very professional and serious manner. The Code of Conduct and Ethics adopted by this Board and intended to hold all of us to a high standard of public service requires Board members to practice civility, refrain from abusive or retaliatory behavior, and foster a safe and respectful work environment. Sustained violations trigger a censure process, which was considered prior to this item. This item presents the Board with three additional actions to consider. One, removing the supervisor from role of chair or vice chair. Two, removing the supervisor from board-appointed boards, commissions, and ad hoc assignments. And three, referring this matter to the grand jury for an independent review, both of the conduct at issue, and to evaluate our Code of Conduct process for any recommended changes. The first two items are governed by the Board rules last updated in May of 2021, and provides for both of these duties to be managed by a majority vote of the Board of Supervisors. The last item is in response to the concerns raised by Supervisor Bushnell around due process. I believe the most transparent and appropriate way, these are my comments. Uh, I'm not representing the Board here. These are my personal comments. The last item is in response to the concerns raised by Supervisor Bushnell around due process. I believe the most transparent and appropriate way to address that concern is through referral to the grand jury, which serves as an independent and impartial body. By doing so, we are both upholding the policies we have in place and demonstrating our commitment to fairness and continuous improvement. This approach supports accountability, maintains due process, and affirms our duty to safeguard the integrity of county government. With that, I respectfully request the Board, uh, request Board discussion, public comment, and direction of the recommended actions before us today. Lastly, I want to say that, um, some of you may know, maybe you don't, but I had complaints filed against me a few years ago. And, um, there was an investigation into all of that, and there was one sustained finding. That sustained finding was that I, in fact, also violated our rules of conduct, or, um, the Code of Conduct. And what was found was that it, it, there was no findings in regards to the accusations that were made against me. There were a lot of accusations. And the report found none of those accusations to be true. They were unfounded. And, but it did find that, in fact, I did violate one, uh, section of the Code of Conduct, and that's, uh, section B, point nine. And what that is, is that basically when we, as board members, are out at, uh, public meetings, even if they're not fully public, but meetings, where we're representing ourselves and/or the Board, uh, we're required to state that we are not there unless we were appointed to represent the Board on a board or commission. If we're just attending, which was the case for me, uh, we're supposed to state that we are not representing the Board as a whole. And I failed to do that. I would say that I think all of us as board members probably fail to do that a lot, quite often. I think we all forget to do that. It was a real learning lesson for me to realize that that was something I need to do. I think I'm still working on that, to be honest. Uh, but I took that, uh, took that to heart. The investigation also found that it was a very ill-advised, uh, thing of me to enter into discussion about ancestral right differences between tribes and rancherias. And it was absolutely ill-advised. And I apologize for that over and over again, because it was, it was a mistake on my part. But it wasn't a violation of any Code of Conduct issue. And lastly, the findings found that my comments that I made that day at a particular meeting were found to be lawful, civil, politely articulated, not directed at a specific person, nor a verbal attack, and did not constitute unsubstantial allegations, as the term is defined. I'm just talking about myself. And I'm being honest about the fact that I have, uh, had a complaint against me as well. So I wanted to be transparent about that, because members of the public have been questioning that in a very big way. And so I thought I would respond to that, because it's been out there in the public accusing me of all kinds of things that I didn't do. And so that's, uh, my statement there.
Can I, um... Can the Board decide what they're going to do?
Yeah, I hear you. So, um, I want to speak to why I believe the grand jury part of this is important, because I think the process is, we did, we did a job of making this process, but I think it needs to be amended, and I think there needs to be review. I want to state that we have many great directors and supervisors and managers in this organizations, in this organization. And if any, any of them had acted in this way, it's not unlikely they would have been given administrative leave right away to protect the employees. What, what would have happened? The situation involves a different dynamic. HR cannot demand anything of us, such as suspension, office relocation, required training. However, the right thing to do would have to ask HR what the recommendations were and to implement them. That's not what happened. HR did have recommendations for Supervisor Bushnell, and there were two of them, and one of them was partially done, and the other was completely ignored. And so we do have to understand that no other supervisor, or when I mean supervisor, I mean below us or manager, would have that opportunity or option to not take the direction of HR post the incident. But that's not what happened. So I want to be clear about that. That's, that makes it different. That was what happened then in May, and we are now in November, right? So there wasn't much that really occurred in terms of the workplace environment response from that incident until now. And so I, I think that that is a, that leaves, again, employees vulnerable in that space. We are responsible for maintaining a safe working environment, free of threats, free of violent behavior. The employees are scared. This is precisely why employees don't make This is precisely why employees don't make complaints, for fear of what will happen afterwards, or what won't happen. So that's part of that responsibility discussion that's out there. Being responsible, responsible is the, being responsible is the ability to respond. And we do have that ability to respond. So I just, for, for me, I think it's, that's what, um, we really need to do. And I, I would like to make sure that we have recommendations in our processes moving forward, that if something happens, that we take really seriously what HR says to us as supervisors and take action and not wait till this process gets a hearing five months later. I think that that is something that I think is, that, um, we need to understand. And I, I want to say, this, yes, is this a completely awkward and uncomfortable situation? Uh, I consider Supervisor Bushnell a colleague and a friend. Uh, we, uh, I think in general, and we have a much better relationship people might imagine, although it's a bit strained in this moment, I'm sure. But, um, uh, I very much respect her for the work that she does. And, and honestly, the experiences that she's had inform this, uh, inform this body in a very, uh, authentic and, and heartfelt way that I think is really, really important. It just can't bleed into the workplace and, and cause stress and strain within our workforce. That is what we're talking about today. So, again, we have a different process than everybody else. I think that that is something that needs to be dealt with, um, in, in a review by the grand jury, because we're gonna need, I think we need a third-party review of our process. We did our process and I feel it's clunky and has issues. And so for that reason, I think we do need a grand jury review of this. And, and, um, I think if there are other issues around sort of, uh, any kind of longstanding patterns or any of those sorts of things, that can be vetted within that space as well. So, um, yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
Thanks. I, I agree about the, the grand jury. Um, I, I think we've all, um, learned something through this process. And one of the things that I have learned is that, um, the, the role of the grand jury is more expansive than I realized, um, and is exactly the right body to make recommendations about, um, process issues in government. And, um, they receive complaints about, um, public officials. So they are, uh, they have a process for that. I, I hope that they can inform our process. Our current process puts our staff in the position of initiating and administratively overseeing our own code of conduct that we adopted as a board. Um, it's, it's clunky. It doesn't, um, it, it puts the staff who make up that, um, kind of, uh, triad of evaluators in a very awkward position that I think isn't, um, the best fit. Um, they do it well, um, in that they've carried out the work that we have told them to do. Um, but I think recommendations from the grand jury about how that can be better done, or whether we, um, in the future, uh, would refer all matters like this to the grand jury, whatever the case might be, I think we can learn something from that. So I would be, uh, willing to volunteer to make, uh, to be part of drafting that letter. One of the options in our pocket today is, um, to appoint two members of the Board of Chiefs to draft a correspondence to the grand jury, asking them to review this matter and how we've handled it and make recommendations for the future. Um, I would find that very valuable and I think it addresses some of what's come up here and... Oh, someone, someone was smoking in the chambers. Oh, I can smell it now. That doesn't happen very often. Okay. Um, anyway. I, I didn't, no. Um, I'm, uh, I think if you want to take this in parts, um, this is a little awkward because you're chairing this meeting.
I just want to get through this.
I will make a motion. If we're gonna take this in parts, then I will make the motion about, um, a, a referral to the grand jury and be one of the people, um, drafting that correspondence. Does anyone else want to volunteer to help me with that?
Is there a second?
Yeah, there's a sec, I have, there's a second for that.
Okay.
Can I?
Supervisor Bone.
I'm all in favor of taking the process, clunky or whatever words we want to use. I'm, I'm all in favor of, of, of taking that to the grand jury to look at. I, this is a situation that's in front of us now, and I don't think the whole idea is trying to drag this out any longer than already has. It's a May, it's a terrible situation. I support staff 100%. There's no doubt that there were problems. There's no doubt that this was a situation that did not need to happen. I'm gonna make it real simple and easy here. I would ask Supervisor Bushnell to step down from the last three meetings and that's it, as far as I'm concerned. I don't think her boards and commissions, nor her constituents, want her off those boards. I think she represents us on those boards well. Um, it's not a full pound of flesh of what you're looking for, but it's a third of a pound. And I think that's probably the only thing I could support.
Can I?
And I don't have, I'm just, so...
Thank you. I think we had a first and a second. And am I correct, Kaylee?
I can take down that part as a written and do the final motion on the line.
No, I, I think that Supervisor Arroyo made a motion and Supervisor Wilson seconded it, or am I wrong?
I think he, I think he did, and I don't know if that also involved being willing to co-write that letter. I heard a different recommendation in response to our motion. We can also combine them if there's willingness, but maybe that's more of a conversation. Also, just wanted to note that going back to the grand jury thing, which is the motion on the table, um, they, they sometimes do 10 or more cases a year and, um, they can, you know, so there's, there's not an issue with capacity there. There are multiple parts to this agenda item, so if folks want to add on to it, I, I don't know if you're willing to consider this recommendation, Supervisor Bushnell, but I'm, I'm trying to, trying to, uh, make this move ahead.
And, and I would say I'm, I'm willing to amend or take an amendment to your motion to add, um, uh, removal from chair. I want to be really clear for anyone who thinks that, uh, I want to be chair. The last time that was, I was supposed to be chair, I did, I passed on that. So, um, and so it's not, it's not something I want to do in general. I'm gonna do it because if that, that's what happens here or even when it comes into the next year, because it's part of the job. Uh, but, um, it's not, it, it doesn't mean the same thing to me as it means to other people, is all I'm really getting at. Um, and then, um, so I'm happy to have that be included in the motion, if the motion-maker wants to do that, uh, because I heard that from Supervisor Bone. Uh, and I'm willing to be, uh, appointed to the, to the drafting of the letter to the grand jury.
All right. We can, um, all accept that amendment?
Okay.
It's just, um, yep.
Let me clarify. Then the, the grand jury, through the chair, the grand jury part is just to investigate our process after this is done, right?
It's to evaluate our handling of this matter and investigate, and make recommendations about our process, is my underst, that's what I, what I stated.
Going a little further deep, this, it's, it's not involving, it's our process. Take away this situation, our process, because it's, it's not a situation, it's a process that we have in place. Is our process proper is what we're addressing. It doesn't further this situation out anymore at all. It'll be done, um, I do not want to do this, but she will miss three meetings, I don't think. And good thing about it, it's in December, so we don't do anything anyway. Um, and that's, just so, there is something, but beating this horse to death, I want to make sure our staff feels comfortable. I, I know Michelle is not comfortable. I apologize for that, because I respect that. But this has gone on so long that this is not a process. This is not a process. This is a very, very slow death by a thousand cuts. And I'm going through the same thing myself right now, so, before somebody leaks it out, so. Um, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's where I'm at. I just want this done with. And the grand jury can review our processes separate away from what we're going. Have them look at our process to make sure our process is right, not to take the process we did here and evaluate it, the process as a whole.
I think that the, the challenge is that this has illustrated, um, you know, I think we're, we're all aware that we've had Supervisor Bushnell's attorney, um, you know, uh, that was part of our public record, that we had letters about the process. Um, it illustrates what issues Supervisor Bushnell and her counsel have found and/or pointed out. Um, and that is, uh, that's an opportunity for us to pass it on to another, um, neutral body to evaluate the process. So I see that as a benefit to have this accompanying information as a, because otherwise, it's looking at it in a vacuum without the, here's where we have been, um, asked to, you know, get into more detail about what we do and how we do it. Um, that, without that, it doesn't really illustrate the problem. You know what I mean?
Vote, evaluation of the process is what I'm after, not the situation.
Okay, great. I think we can make that clear.
So can we, while I still am chair, for five more minutes? Kaylee, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a, I need to, I, I'm gonna tell you guys that I respectfully need to get off this dais. And so I can either leave, which I don't want to. I respect everybody up here, but I need to breathe too, okay? And, uh, I'm taking responsibility, all of it. Do you want to add more to the motion?
I just want to clarify, are we removing the part about the conduct of the supervisor from the letter? Because I think that's what he's asking for, but I would prefer that it remain, because I think this is part of the problem, is that we are a political body making a decision, that's an HR decision, that I feel like we need a non-political review of.
I see. So that would be like a two-pronged part of the letter.
Read it to you right here. It, what's in our thing is consider referral of the matter to the grand jury to review Supervisor Bushnell's conduct and to provide recommendations on changes to be considered to the board of supervisor's code of conduct. I would prefer that we just, it remain the same, as that.
And with that, I'll pull my amendment.
Okay. Process-wise, we're having some challenges.
You lose your, you lose your, uh, uh, vote from Supervisor Bone if that remains, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I'm leaving it up to you. Ha ha.
I love that. Uh, this is not, uh, uncomfortable for anyone, in case everyone can't tell that already. Um, all right. I think the way that it's worded here is what I intended to say. So I appreciate the clarification.
All right. And then, does Supervisor Madron have anything else he needs to say or want to do? Okay.
Kaylee.
May I repeat the motion? The motion I'm understanding that Supervisor Arroyo presented was to make a motion to approve staff recommendations three and four. That's it. And one.
Supervisor Bone added that and he pulled that, unless you all want to put it back in there.
Yeah, I think it should remain, because that, it is something that he wanted in there, even though he won't be voting for it.
All right. One, three, and four is what my motion is, um, and not two.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Bushnell?
Absane.
Supervisor Bone?
No.
Motion carries three, zero.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
We've got to close out, uh, close session, so if, uh, we can finalize the last item for a closed session. Yeah, and then we will come back and report out.
Oh, okay, so that's me then, since I'm acting su, chair here. So, uh, we're gonna adjourn for closed, uh, we're gonna go into closed session. Do we take public comment, even though we've already?
We've already done.
We've already done. So we're gonna do that. We'll be back in five, 10 minutes, probably, hopefully sooner. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Black.
Everybody ready?
All right, here we are. Coming back from closed session, do we have anything to report out?
Uh, thank you, Supervisor Wilson. There's no reportable action.
And with that, we have, we are adjourning this meeting.